The zoning board of adjustment meeting for Long Hill Township is hereby called to order at 7:32 for the February 15th, 2022 meeting. Call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Pledge of allegiance. Brian, you want to put up the flag? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll call. Deb, your voice is very choppy. We can't hear you.
My voice?
Yeah, now it's louder.
Okay, sorry. Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay. Just letting you know that there's an issue.
No, I said new computer, so make sure, yeah, definitely tell me. So, all right, so Mr. Grosskopf is excused tonight. Mr. Hane is excused tonight. Mr. Rosenberg is excused tonight. Ms. Lindemann?
Here.
Ms. Brennan?
Can't hear you.
Yeah, we couldn't hear you. No, we still can't hear you.
Still can't hear you. All right. We see you motioning here, so I'm gonna move on.
But we gotta fix that so we can hear. Um, okay.
Vice Chairman Johnson? Wait.
Here.
I'm sorry.
Chairman Gregg.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, we have been minutes. We have lots of minutes. You were busy for hours doing these minutes, I assume.
I really was.
Yes. Uh, we have the November 9th, 2021 board meetings, the planning board and zoning board of adjustment minutes of the joint special meeting. Uh, now, everybody that's here now. Well, let me see, myself, Brian, Gary, Tom, Jill. Jill's not here. Gary's here. Brian's here, and I'm here. Okay, so the three of us could vote on this one. Out of the three of us that are currently here that can vote on it, are there any changes or corrections to these November 9th meetings minutes?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the November 9th, 2021 minutes of the planning board and zoning board of adjustment for the joint special meeting?
So moved.
Second. Gary. Gary.
Gary, Gary or Gary?
Yeah.
Yes.
You second? Can you second that motion? Okay. All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, good. That's that.
We have to do the, I'm sorry, Mr. We have to do the executive session for that meeting separate from the regular minutes.
Okay, now we have the executive session meetings for the November 9th, uh, meeting. Uh, did everybody, did they, uh, did Gary, myself, and Brian? We all had a chance to look at it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Any changes or corrections?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the executive session for November 9th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we got rid of that one. Now we have the November 16th meeting. Zoning Board of Adjustment Minutes of the meeting hearing for November 16th, 2021. President was myself, Brian, Jerry, Gary. And that's it. Uh, out of those people, Brian, Jerry, and Gary, uh, do you have any corrections or changes to these minutes?
No.
Do I hear a motion to accept the November 16th, 2021 minutes?
Yes.
So moved. I'll second that.
Somebody will second. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done. Now we have the November 18th minutes. The zoning board of adjustment minutes of the special meeting hearing for November 18th, 2021. And the ones that can vote on it are myself, Gary. And that's it. Because nobody else is here. All right. Um, Gary, you want to move it? I'll second it.
I so move it.
I second. All right, all in favor? Aye. Say aye.
Aye.
All right, good.
Have to move it, move it.
Right. Okay, now the December 21st, 2020 minutes of the zoning board of adjustments, special meeting. Uh, myself, Brian, and Gary, all the three of us that can do it. Out of the three of us, um, any changes or corrections?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the, the first sentence indicates that I, um, that I made the announcements. I believe you were there, so I think that would have been you.
Oh, he was there. I forgot. I thought I changed it. Okay.
I was there, yeah. Okay, that's fine. Good catch. All right. As I was there, according to this. All right. Uh, other than that change, any other minutes, uh, any other changes or corrections? No? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the December 21st, 2021 minutes with that change noted?
I moved. Yep, second.
Want to be a second? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Now we have the January 4th, 2022 minutes. We're into the 2022 minutes. Myself, Brian, Jerry, and Gary. Okay, there's four of us. Out of those four people, any changes or corrections to those minutes?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, same, same thing.
Same thing. Okay, you're right. I noticed that. Okay, you gotta change it. I, I made the announcements. All right, other than that change, any other changes? Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the January 4th, 2022 minutes with the noted change?
I moved.
Second.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Uh, we have the January, I'm sorry, uh, yes, we have the January 18th. And there's, it was originally type seven, but then she, uh, fixed it by saying 18. Uh, so Jerry, myself, Gary, and Brian, any, uh, changes or, uh, corrections to those minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think there are two. Uh, one is the date, I don't think is correct.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. That should be the 18.
So it should be 18, yes.
Yep.
But I think if it's 2023, I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it does. But it should be 2022. What's the matter with you, Deborah?
That's what happens when you're writing, um, oh, you know why that does? It's because the reorg for 2023 is January 17.
Oh, so you both, okay, that happens.
Yes, that's what happens when you're copying and pasting a lot, and my apologies.
Okay.
And, uh,
I'll have it again. All right.
One, one other correction.
One more, yeah.
Item 11, uh, for the meeting minutes, I think we're listing November 9th twice.
Okay.
Yes, you're right. Okay. Yeah, that should be taken out. You're right.
Okay.
Topographical. Cotton pasting again. Anything else?
No.
All right, do I hear a motion to accept as corrected the January 18th, 2022 minutes?
So moved.
Second? Anybody? Come on.
Oh, second.
Okay, good. Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we have the final and last, but not least, February 1st, 2022 minutes. And, uh, we have the date correct. We have the person who made the announcements correct. Any other changes? So it's me, Brian, Jerry, and that's it. All right. Jerry, you want to move it? We can't hear you, Jerry. Still can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, I didn't know there was a problem with my audio. I wasn't making other motions during the minute, so I guess you guys didn't hear me.
No, we didn't. We can hear you better now.
I'll move to February 1, 22 minutes.
Okay, thank you. You want a second, Brian?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right. Uh, Jerry, that microphone on your face, pull it up closer to your mouth because it, it made a difference. No, I can't hear you now. I don't know what's wrong with it. It seems to be cutting out. We can, I don't think that microphone's working on your headset.
Yeah, that's for listening.
Oh, okay. Well, you gotta stick your face in a computer because we can't hear you.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. I can hear myself.
We can hear you fine now. But as soon as you back away, we can't hear you, so.
All right, so I'll hold the phone like this.
Yeah, just, yeah, I just want to let you know because I don't want you not to be heard. So, all right.
Thanks, Ed.
All right, now, we have resolutions. We have the resolution for the 224230 Main Street LLC, commonly known as 224-230 Main Avenue, Sterling, New Jersey. Block 11606, Lot 17 and 18, application number 21-03Z. Hearing dates were May 4th, May 18th, July 6th, September 7th, October 5th, November 16th, December 21st, January, uh, 4th, 2022. Board action was January 4th, 2022. Memorialization is, uh, today, February 15th, 2022. Uh, I'm sorry, memorialization, would that be February 15th or February, uh?
Oh, it should be today's day. What did I?
Yeah, right. There's a mistake right there.
All right.
So it's the, uh, it is the, yeah, it is the 15th.
Today is the 15th. What, what did I put in the resolution?
What?
What's that? What date did I put in the resolution?
February 15th. I'm sorry, my mistake. I just, I didn't realize it was, uh, February 15th already. Where's the day gone? Where's the month going? All right, um, who's, uh, eligible to move this one?
Only two people, Mr. Chairman, yourself, yourself and, um, Mr. Gianakis.
Okay, Gary, you want to move it?
Sure, yes, I'd like to move.
Okay, and I will second it. Okay, we'll call.
Okay, Mr. Gianakis.
Uh, yes.
And Chairman Gregg.
Yes. Okay, done that one.
Thank you all. Have a great meeting. Have a great night.
Thanks, Fred.
Thanks, Fred. See you later.
Take care.
Go back to the disco now.
Yeah.
Uh, now we have the Chris, um, CIA, CAI AZZA. Uh, it's, um, application number 21-19Z. 35 Mars Town Road, Gillette, New Jersey, Block 13404, Lot 1.04. Hearing date, January 18th. Board action, January 18th, and memorialization today, February 15th, 2022. And the members, uh, are myself, Brian, Jerry, and Gary. All right. So, any, uh, any, uh, comments on this resolution? Anybody? Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Okay, we'll call.
Mr. Gianakis.
Yes.
Um, I'm sorry. Yeah, again, no, that was right. You made the motion. Mr. Gianakis, okay, Vice Chairman Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Roneyo?
We can't hear you, Jerry. No, we still can't hear you.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
All right.
And Chairman Gregg.
Yes.
What did you hear?
Very good. Got through that relatively quickly. All right, now for the main show here. Application, major preliminary and final site plan carried from February 1st. I'm sorry, February 1st? No.
Yes.
It was carried from February 1st, 2020? Yeah, it was carried from February 1st, 2022. Block 10515, Lot 7, Zone B-D, 44 Plainfield Road, application number 21-13Z. Jonathan Rocker, applicant proposes to construct a three-story and mixed-use building to include 1,900 square feet of retail on the first floor, and 24 residential units on the second and third floors. Is the applicant prepared and ready for us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Okay.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, uh, members of the board, members of your professional staff, have a good, I hope you're, uh, you're well, and I hope you had a nice Valentine's Day.
Yes, thank you.
All right, um, we, we left off ending with your engineer. Right.
And I understand that you made some changes as a result of some of our questions.
Right, I'd like to provide some introductory remarks, and then I'm going to go right to Kathy Muller to provide a summary of those changes.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, as you know, we're seeking, uh, as mentioned by Deborah, we're seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and two design waivers, one relating to the height of the fence above the four-foot trash enclosure wall, and the other requiring 5% parking lot landscaping, where we're providing, uh, 2%, so as to avoid the, uh, increasing the impervious coverage of the property. At the request of Mr. Roronio, uh, we have eliminated the design waiver for planting three shade trees. Uh, to recap, we received D1 use variance and bulk variance relief on the number of stories from two to three to permit the construction of a mixed-use project, uh, of 24 rental units and retail space on the first floor. Uh, that was, resolution was adopted on April 6th, 2021. Uh, at our first hearing on the site plan on February 1, 2022, we listened very closely and very carefully to the board members' excellent comments and had, and have revised the site plan to address those comments. Many applicants simply ignore what the board members have to say and just proceed with their plan. That, that is not what my client is about. He has, number one, added three shade trees to the parking areas, thus avoiding the design waiver. Uh, extended the sidewalk to the southerly property line. Three, shortened the double yellow line to avoid confusion for the first parking space. Four, numbered the 60 parking spaces so that the 12 tandem spaces will be assigned to 12 residential units. Spaces 13 through 15 will be unassigned to guests. Spaces 16 through 19 will be assigned to the retail space. 20 to 37 and 43 to 48 will be assigned to the residential units. And spaces 38 to 42 will be assigned to guests. All of this will be enforced by my client, uh, who will be both the operator and manager of this building. We added two benches to the front of the site. We provided a five-foot wide pedestrian easement on the northerly property line. If a future connection becomes a, a possibility in the rear of the property. Uh, we moved the fence along the northerly property line so that the pedestrian easement is outside the private amenity space. Uh, our engineer, as I said, will go through these on an exhibit. Please keep in mind that there are no variances that are required in connection with this application. I just want to take a moment, uh, and summarize how we got here, uh, in, in the, the series of machinations to get to this, to where we are. Uh, my client initial application a few years ago was denied by this board. It was a purely residential application for 36 units on three floors. Many of this board's concerns with respect to the first application were addressed in the second use application. To name a few, the first application was an all-residential building. The residential density was much higher than the second application and had no retail component. There was no connectivity to Valley Road. The building was closer to the southerly neighbors. There was no school, safe school stop. In the second use variance application, we came back with a mixed-use concept, reduced the density, and made a compelling argument that many of the permitted uses in the zone, such as small, a small hotel, a banquet facility with live music, and outdoor dining, a restaurant or a bar, a movie theater, or a health club would be more intensive uses than what we proposed. While reducing the residential unit count to 24, my client also still set aside three units as affordable housing units. We also addressed the issue left unaddressed during the first application. The second application, uh, also addressed the important master plan concept of providing, uh, uh, concept of providing walkability to the downtown by including a sidewalk to the BN, PNC Bank site. Uh, keep in mind that this building will be a main focal point. I don't have to tell you that. Uh, in its current state, it is quite unsightly. Uh, we will remove that building with something we believe the town should be proud of for many years to come. We are before this board now for site plan approval, since the board granted the D1 variance relief and approved the number of stories variance. Uh, as your attorney will tell you, the legal issue currently before this board under Section 76B of the MLUL is whether the site plan, not the use. The site plan satisfies the negative criteria, namely whether the site plan constitutes a substantial detriment to the surrounding area and whether the site plan constitutes a substantial impairment to the master plan and zoning ordinance. Since the last hearing, we, we had our traffic engineer conduct new counts as the board requested, and he examined the queuing issue and the gaps in traffic. A formal report was prepared and submitted to this board, and we will address that hopefully tonight. After Ms. Muller, I plan to bring up our architect. Uh, John, can you put up the screen, please? Mr. Sorocco, I asked him to put up the rendering. Uh, this is, this is the building that you ultimately will get. Uh, after Ms. Muller, I plan to bring up, and this is in your plan set, by the way, so it doesn't need to be marked. Uh, I plan to bring up the architect, followed by our traffic expert, and then our planner. Finally, Mr. Rocker would like to say a few words to the board before we conclude our case, and so without further ado, I would like to bring up Ms. Muller, uh, to just, uh, introduce the changes that have been made since the last hearing.
Good evening.
Just to, uh, reiterate, you, you remain sworn in, uh, on this one.
Correct. I'm just going to share my screen, um, just to give a overview of what Mr. Lehrer already summarized for everybody so that you could see how we incorporated.
One second. Let's mark this, um, A4, uh, and it's called Site Plan Revisions dated February 10, 2022, prepared by Paige Muller. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I'm just going to go in a, uh, clockwise, uh, direction here and highlight the changes that we've made, starting along the north property line. We've incorporated a five-foot pedestrian easement parallel to the north property line, running from Plainfield Road to the rear property line. In doing that, we've moved the proposed six-foot fence in five feet to run along that easement, um, to delineate the, the easement from the private amenity space, uh, adjacent to the building. Along Plainfield Road, we've indicated two benches, one towards the northern property line, one towards the southern. And we've extended the, the proposed sidewalk to our southern boundary. Uh, we do note that all improvements within Plainfield Road, what, right away, will be under the jurisdiction of Morris County Planning Board. Again, I had conversations with them during the, the application process that they showed no objection to us putting the sidewalk all the way to the north and along our frontage. Uh, we've shortened the double yellow line. Previously, we indicated at 50 feet, uh, to eliminate some confusion about accessing the first handicap spots. We've incorporated three shade trees, uh, one in the southern island here. We've widened the western island up to five feet and propose a shade tree, and we've moved an, an additional shade tree up by the dumpster enclosure. And then what we've also done is done an assigned parking plan. We've numbered all the spots. Uh, as you've heard, we've indicated the underbuilding pairs to be assigned to 12 residential units, so one unit will get each tandem together. We've indicated the three handicap spaces will be unassigned. Uh, they'll be for both the retail use and the, uh, residential use as needed. The first four spaces, we've indicated for the retail space. The next, along the southern boundary from spot number 20 to 37, and then 43 through 48, all the ones in squares will be assigned to the residential units with the additional five in the back shown in ovals. Spots 38 to 42 will be unassigned. These could be overflow from the retail space or for visitors, uh, for the residential use. We've also updated our waiver requested list. Uh, we've indicated that the one for the shade trees, we're required to have three, will no longer be required to, uh, be a waiver as we have three trees proposed in the parking area. So those are the changes that we've indicated on the site. All, um, listened to the feedback from, from our previous meeting and incorporated some of the changes that were requested.
That's, that's all I have for, uh, Mr. Chairman for.
Uh, does our board engineer have any questions or comments on this?
Um, just, just one or two quick questions for you, Kathy. Thank you for making these changes and providing the exhibit. Um, regarding the assigned parking spaces, um, these would be numbered physically in the field with thermoplastic striping or with signage?
Uh, I prefer numbers on the ground. It's a little less intrusive.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to note that. Um, five feet wide for the pedestrian easement to the north. Can you provide a little bit, uh, you know, more information on how did you arrive on, on five feet? How do you, is that an adequate width? Will that area be graded as part of the project such that it would be, you know, say they wanted to put a walkway, a path, a sidewalk, that it would be, you know, be easy to essentially install it in that five-foot width? Could you provide a little bit more detail or comment on that?
Uh, we are not proposing any improvements within the pedestrian access. Um, again, as you've heard testimony from, from the, uh, prior hearing, this goes to another private property in the rear. So other easements would have to abut it for it to be constructed and lead somewhere. Uh, five feet, it's a very gradual slope across that area. I'd admit, you can put a four-foot elevated walk with the, the wetland constraints, uh, right through there. Uh, there wouldn't be any significant grading required.
Okay, um, just, you know, on, on that same topic with the five-foot pedestrian easement, you know, should there, you know, should they build something through here in the future? Would the property owner be amenable to, you know, an additional, maybe 10 feet or so as a temporary construction easement? Should that be needed during construction in that area? I just don't see five feet as, you know, once it's constructed, that wouldn't be a problem, but during construction, they might, they might need a little bit more room. I believe on the other side of the fence is just grass?
Uh, some grass and some landscaping.
Okay.
Again, this would be a more of a area improvement, and I would anticipate if the neighbor to the north were to develop, there'd be also additional easement provided.
Okay, so something that could be worked out, but it sounds like, you know, there's, there's nothing, you know, really solid right behind that easement that couldn't be moved temporarily for construction purposes. You have a fence, you have some, some shrubs and things, but nothing that couldn't be removed temporarily and replace the fifth need bay?
Correct.
Great. Um, I think those are all the questions I have. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any questions by our planner of the engineers' plans?
Uh, just one question. Uh, again, thank you for the revisions. Um, but I know that one question that had come up last time was regarding the ADA space. If, if, you know, somebody who was coming to the non-residential portion wanted to park in one of the ADA spaces and they weren't available, and would you be amenable, I think, to have some restrictions during office, you know, business hours on one of the ADA spaces? I, I'm assuming you're not proposing that at this time, and I, I just, I guess, would like to understand why. Or, you know, how you came to that conclusion.
Uh, we left them open for anybody's use. Again, it's, the three are required for the total of. Uh, we left them open for anybody's use. Again, it's the three are required for the total of sixty. Um, so that would indicate one for the retail, which only has a parking demand of, of nine. Where the residential has a parking demand of fifty. So it's a little uneven. I don't know the legality of, of assigning an ADA space. When we break down the numbers as to what's required to be provided. Um, I don't see an objection if there's no legal, um. Prohibition against assigning them, but again, the, the three are based on the total of sixty spaces. So if you look fifty and ten, it's not an even breakdown of a third would be for the retail and two-thirds would be for the apartments.
Okay, and, and if you were to just limit it to, let's say, you know, during just the store hours or whatever is there. Off, excuse me, office hours or store hours, that. That would still be a restriction, I'm, I'm guessing, under ADA, like that you, that, you know, that would be. Even if it was available to everybody overnight, let's say.
Right, again, I don't know the legality of assigning it if it's not an equal percentage. Uh, we can certainly look into it. Again, we're open to assigning all the spaces as we've indicated here. Uh, it's a big concern of the board, and there's no prohibition of assigning it during the, the business hours. Uh, we'd be happy to indicate a, a time limitation for the use of that.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess either our engineer or attorney would have to look into that, or your attorney. All right, uh. Now that we have the questions by the experts, uh. You can, no, I guess you can leave your screen up because somebody brought to see it. Any questions by board members of their engineer concerning their changes?
I have a question. I don't know if I'm muted or not.
No, Gary, you're, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, i- it's Gary Gianacca, so I, I, I listened to, uh, the last meeting, and, uh, I, I see a lot of the. Suggestions made by our board members were, were taken into, uh, consideration. The, the pedestrian easement to the north. Who maintains that, uh, ground and who has the easement? Is it to the township or is it to the neighboring property or?
Good question.
The public easement?
Yeah, it would be, it would be, uh, granted to the public, um, and, uh, it would be an easement from my client to the township. Uh, to allow public access there. Uh, yeah, the, the, the proviso was obviously if, if. In the future, the town can work it out in the back of the property to allow that access, uh, we're, we're amenable to providing. Uh, and in terms of maintenance, um. I don't know if there will be much maintenance, but if, if there is, um, I'm sure we can work that out. Um, if, if we're turning it over to the township as an easement. Um, normally the township would, would maintain it.
So are we allowed to approve something that the township then has to maintain? Uh, without knowing the cost of maintaining it? That's, I guess, a question for our council.
It's done all, it's done all the time, um, as a, an easement, um, so if you want us to maintain it, we can certainly maintain it. And, um, and then, um, but.
I, I would say knowing the track record of the town maintaining stuff, it'd probably better else that you guys would look after it. If there's not much maintenance, uh.
Yeah, I agree.
It would just mean clearing it of any debris of, uh, you know, tree limbs and things like that.
Well, and grass, right? So it's, it, it, or was it gravel? I'm sorry, which was it?
Uh, I, I, I don't know how you want it to be done, but if, if it's, if it's, um, you're gonna put some wood chips down there or whatever.
So then, then the maintenance would be weeds. If it's grass, it needs to be cut. If it's gravel, maintenance is weeds, right?
We, we would be responsible.
Okay, all right, that's good to know, uh, and, and that's not just for the two years, like the sidewalk extending north. Again, I, I did listen to the. Uh, last meeting, and I understood that this sidewalk that you're going up all the way to PNC. Is your responsibility to maintain for two years, is that right?
Yes.
But, but this is not just for two years. This is for, because it's on your property.
Right, true, yes.
Okay. Uh, and, and I also have a question about the parking spots. Now that I see them numbered, I think that's a great solution to some comments that, uh, Mister Aronia made. About, you know, uh, the cheap seats or the general public seats and who gets to park in them. Um, how many commercial, uh, please refresh my memory on how many commercial spaces there are. Is it just one commercial space? Is there nine commercial spaces? There's only nine spots, I know that, but I mean, in the building. There's three offices, five offices, nine offices?
Well, it's nineteen hundred square feet. It could, it may be broken out into two, but probably not more than that. Um, and so, uh, Ca- Kathy, why don't you identify how many parking spaces are required for the retail?
Sure, it's nine point five for nineteen hundred square feet. Um, that's inclusive of the handicap cap, uh, requirement. So what we did is we put four up as close to the doors, the closest ones to the door. And then the overflow are the five open in the rear.
Right, I, I, I got, I got that part, and I understand that it's to the requirement of the nineteen hundred square feet, but. Let's just say for conversation's sake that it ended up being split into three, the nineteen hundred was split into three units. Or, or, or two units, um, you know, you're gonna have at least. One employee in each one of those places. Uh, in each one of those parking spots to be in the, the retail establishment. So that kind of, I guess I'm wondering, you know, is it just for customers or is it for employees? The, the, the limited nine spots for nineteen hundred square feet?
So typically, I, well, the, the nine spaces would be for employees and/or visitors, um, you know, clients.
So if there's nine commercial spaces, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if there's nine commercial spaces divided up into nineteen hundred, there's no parking spots for, um, consumers?
So the parking requirement of one per two hundred square feet takes into account not only employees but customers. Just as if it was a mall situation, you would have the square footage. It's not broken down by the number of employees and the number of, um, anticipated, uh, customers coming in. So what we did here is we have four closest to the door. And in a lot of situations, it's, it's self-maintained. They may, if they find that they don't have room for. A preferred customer space, they ask their employees to park in the, the further spaces. That's not an unusual, uh, situation.
Mister Gianakis, if you would be feel more comfortable for us to re- um, require. In, in, um, the lease with the tenant that the employees park in the back to leave their spaces in the front, that's not a problem.
Yeah, that, I think that's where we're going on that, right, Jerry?
I, I, um, not exactly. I mean, I agree, you're very, uh. Perceptive on trying to accommodate what, what you think an objection is. I guess I. I was unaware that, you know, this is the minimum requirement for nineteen hundred square feet, and I just keep thinking that there's, there's more than, you know, one nineteen hundred square foot. Like employees and I don't know how many spaces you're dividing that nineteen hundred up and, and that there's still enough parking spots. I know we said it's not gonna be a bowling alley, it's not gonna be a movie theater, it's not gonna be a gym. But, you know, you've got one employee and one customer, and, you know, that's.
Let's assume that it's a lawyer, let's assume it's a lawyer, Mister Gianakis, which is probably gonna be a small, a small office, then. You'd have a paralegal, you'd have a secretary, maybe you'd have, and you'd have one lawyer, and then.
Three cars.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then the rest of it would be left for whoever comes in, and I can tell you, I'm a lawyer and. Very few customers come in, very few.
They're all Zoom calling you now.
It's all on Zoom and it's all, yeah.
Okay, so the lawyers, you know, one lawyer, three lawyers take up, uh, nineteen hundred square feet, they divide that in three, or three, an accountant, an architect, and a lawyer. Walk into a bar and they, they say, you know, we, we wanna be our bars and employees. And, and I just wanna make sure that there's enough for the amount of square footage that's there.
Uh, we are complying.
Nine spots, I guess somebody figured it out.
Yeah, we are complying with your ordinance in terms of retail space.
Okay.
I just wanna chime in real quick with an additional question, and, and this might be maybe for the, uh, owners and property managers. We're assigning two parking spaces to each unit. But say, for example, it's a, it's a single tenant, are they going to be required to get two parking spaces? Or is that going to be a, a question in the lease whether they want one or two? Because potentially you might end up with, with more parking spaces if, if the tenant only requires or wants one parking space.
Mister Rocker will be up later, you can ask him the question.
Okay, great, just so, you know, it's kind of a consideration on that.
Yeah, that, you don't want a, a space going unused if it doesn't have to be.
Exactly, you know, you don't want it marked for one unit if the unit's never going to take it except when they have a guest every, you know, few weeks or something like that.
Okay, any other questions from board members? And please speak up because I can't see all of you.
Jessica Brennan, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Jessica.
Have we come to a determination on whether the parking lot will require the porous pavement? That was left open last meeting?
We have not. But we did show an exhibit last meeting. If it were to be, you know, if we needed more stormwater management, we can handle it within the, the confines of the proposed curb.
Board member Brendan, what we've decided is that. That your board engineer, if, if your board engineer determines that we need that impervious. Uh, because of the major storm water or a minor application, then Kathy would. Accom- we would accommodate it with the, um, with the porous pavement.
And that show, on your one exhibit here, it shows that it's in actually where the cars are parked. Around the edge here.
It's regular pavement, you won't, you won't be able to tell the difference.
Okay, just kind of different composition?
Yeah, it has, it has a different composition that allows it to be porous, if there's sand underneath. And, um, I don't wanna be an engineer, but I, I believe that's what Kathy said.
That's correct.
And just on the student pickup pad, how, what is the distance from, from Valley Road? With that? How many feet to the road?
Um, well, we have an eight-by-eight pad, which is towards the back. So the distance here, um, I can measure that real quick. From the curb line to the back of the pad is approximately twenty feet.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? Because I, I was not at the last meeting about this bus, uh, stop, which I think.
Yes.
The pad is just a, it's a pad on the property on the other side of the sidewalk. I can see it, it's really just to stand on. It's not, the bus is still stopping on the road, right?
Yes.
Okay, and has any coordination with, uh, the busing company or the school of, hey? Or the schools that are gonna hopefully use that, um. Bus stop, uh. Uh, approve that, yes, they wanna stop there, uh, it's a good spot for them to spot, uh, uh, stop, and thank you very much for providing it, or are they like, no, we're gonna still stop up the road?
Uh, respectfully, I, I don't think that's the purview of this board, um, it's just a site plan approval that the, the, the school district can decide that would be the spot, but it, it's really not within our.
Right, well, that would have to be a condition if there's any, any students, and that we've worked out with the bus, with the, with the Board of Education. Yes, Jerry. Still can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so regarding the bus stop, I agree, it's not our purview. However, if you've noticed that the buses stop in front of every house.
We're losing you, Jerry, get a little closer.
Buses stop in front of every residence.
Right.
And why wouldn't they stop in front of this building?
No, I, there's no reason to believe they wouldn't, Jerry. Uh, I think that was just a, a sugge- just a comment that makes sure that, you know.
Yeah, it wasn't really a question, I just wanted a clarification that the, that it would be used. You know, why, why build it if it's, if they would never stop there, but. I guess that's the stop for all apartments that live there, all of, that would be the bus stop for the apartment building, basically.
If there are children, they will come, they will stop. Um, got it. Any other questions? Jerry, we can't hear you.
Is it, Deborah, is it possible for you to, uh, switch my telephone?
For you to what?
Deborah, can you see my telephone number?
Can I, I, can, can I do what? I'm sorry.
Can you see his telephone number?
On the telephone, I'm coming on the public number.
I, I think he wants his phone number to be, um, made up, present a panelist, so he can speak through.
Oh, oh, was that the nine oh eight six four seven seven six one seven?
Yeah, Jerry, why can't you get a computer that has a speaker and, and a microphone?
I could do that, I think.
Uh, okay.
Really?
Okay.
Good thing you're not a tech guy, Jerry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you fine.
Okay, so, um, but you can't see me, I'm sorry. So the, uh. My comments before were, you could hear that about the bus, right? We all agree on that, that.
Yes.
It's not our purview and that. The school board, there's no reason why they wouldn't stop in front of a multifamily building if multiple kids.
Exactly.
One child's getting on the bus. I mean, they, they do it, they stop in front of every house. So I don't think that's an issue. Um, secondly, I just wanted to thank Mister Rocker, Mister Lair for, uh, making all the accommodations they did. They, they did, uh, notice everything that we as a board said, everything that I said, and they made a provision for that, so I just wanted to say thank you very much for that. Um, thank you Samantha for looking at the pedestrian path and for getting the things that we need to do to make that happen if we ever do. Uh, have access through Bay Street, I hope we do, I think it'll happen. And/or it may happen through the next door neighbor there. I mean, because that building will probably come down too at some point on the north side. So that's what I really have to say. It doesn't necessarily mean anything other than I wanna say thank you for that. Um, and then one question about the pedestrian path. I, I, I think maybe from a, a legal perspective and probably a practical perspective, this is the best way to do it, but I think that the south side is higher ground. The north side seems to be lower ground. Is it too much to, maybe I can ask Samantha about that. If you've noticed, you know, the, the grade there and what you think about that. I mean, I guess what we could do is on the, if, if it stays on the north side, we did say we could do boardwalk areas where, where necessary. There are some pretty wet spots in the back.
I think.
I mean, by the back is the west side.
Are you comparing the north side of the property to the south side of the property line?
Yes, yeah, the south side seems to be higher.
Yeah, but I think we would wanna stay away from that because of the distance to the residential property and the residential zone to the rear. I think we have much greater potential to be able to get another easement from the property to the north, should that be redeveloped and. You know, grading might be a little bit trickier, but I think the, um, you know, the benefits of putting it on the northern property line further away from the residential, uh, greatly outweigh, you know. Some, some grading concerns that I think we can take care of, especially if it was gonna be a sort of a raised walkway that you see through wet areas.
Okay, and are you confident that in that little bit of wetlands that we'd have to, uh, transgress there, would we be able to do that? Is that a practical thing?
Um.
Even if it is boardwalk or raised walkway somehow?
Raised boardwalks are permitted through wetlands through a permitting process.
Okay.
So i- it is a possibility. I've seen it done. I've designed it in other municipalities. It, it, it is certainly possible.
Mister Rania, we would get those permits if, uh.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that accommodation. I do, I do really appreciate that. Um, two other things, one is the parking, um, I'm. I've read it a few times, I'm not exactly sure I understand it. So if these were to be, uh, two independent applications, one for a nineteen hundred square foot retail slash office. Use and the other one for, you know, the, the residential use with the number of units that you have there. Would the parking that's allotted to those two uses stand on its own merits? Would they, would you have enough to satisfy, uh, the residential and the office if they were, let's say, different owners, different parcels, but just abutting each other? Would that be the same number of spaces?
Kathy?
Yes, uh, what we did is we calculated the parking demand for both uses independently. And add those two numbers together. Uh, so the total required on site by your ordinance is fifty-seven point three. By the ordinance and the RSIS for the residential component. So we actually exceed it by keeping the sixty spaces that we show here.
Thank you very much. I have another just general question, but this is just strictly with engineering and planning, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You might wanna say the general question to either Mister Rocker or another witness.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions from board members of their engineer? All right, seeing none. Uh, any members of the public would like to ask their engineer questions about the changes that we saw?
Yes.
Mister Jordan Freeman, as he's the objecting attorney, I'm going to promote, uh, ask him to be promoted to, uh, panels.
Okay.
Mister Fiedman, would you like to turn on your camera?
There we go. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay, um. I, I have a question and, and, uh, it, it relates to a note I took from last time. Um, I hope it will be indulged. Uh, Ms. Muller. Ms. Muller, you made reference to approximately 2,000 cubic yards of dirt in your prior testimony. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Can you tell me what you based your calculation on?
We make two surfaces in AutoCAD and do a general cut fill analysis.
And about when did you do that analysis?
Probably a few days before the hearing.
Okay, so your analysis would only take into account topographical conditions existing as of the date of your analysis. Is that a correct statement?
It's based on a survey that was done in 2021 in our proposed grades.
And was that analysis submitted to the board's engineer for consideration?
I presented the calculations as part of my testimony.
And your report, correct? Was it in your report?
No, no, we had talked about it during the TCC and that was some additional information that was requested. So we calculated it and I provided it during, just during my testimony.
That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Hi, any other public that wishes to ask questions of their engineer?
Members of the public? Linda Parisi.
Yes, Ms. Parisi.
Is it just about the changes or is it?
I would prefer to keep it to the changes since we've asked questions about, well, let me put it this way. The changes do impact the rest of the of the site plan. So if you have a question about it, what is your question?
And please state your name.
Yes, state your name and address, please.
Linda Parisi, 54 Plainfield Road.
Okay, and just questions now because you all have a chance to make a statement later.
Okay, again, if it's just about the changes, I do not have a question about the changes that were made.
Okay, do you have a question about the, anything about the building or the engineering of it?
I do. I have questions like about the drainage and I think last time I was, I actually was sick last time and did not even get the notice until that day.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, go ahead. If it's about, if the engineer can ask, can answer it, ask your question.
So my question is, I believe last time it was stated that the drainage for the parking and everything was underground and going towards the wetlands. Now, how is that going to impact the wetlands since it's already so wet back there?
So we actually broke it down into three different drainage areas. We look at the existing conditions and then we mimic those under proposed conditions. So under existing conditions, the building kind of sits at a high high area where the front and part of the building goes towards Plainfield Road. And then there's a ridge through the property that some of the drainage that goes to the rear actually flows to the north and some flows to the south. So when we do our proposed conditions with our discharge points and taking into account what's contained, what's collected, what's released and what's running over land, we looked at all three drainage areas with no increase in any direction.
Okay, just because I did go back there the other day and I mean, it's wet back there. I mean, there's, it's like a pond back in several areas in the back. So I am concerned because that side of my house is always wet on my north side. So where's drainage is?
Well, if I understand correctly, their engineers said that they weren't dispersing in any any given direction, correct?
That's correct.
In three directions. Okay. And then my other question was still about the recreation space, which I know during the first meeting was said that that could be something that could be brought up in the next meeting, that it wasn't a, that it was just a use variance. It wasn't that you still had to satisfy all the negative criteria. So my question is, in all of these zones that I'm seeing, it says that there's supposed to be 400 square feet per apartment, not including space in the setbacks. So is there any recreation space for any of these apartment buildings?
Mr. Kaplan, I'm not sure what she's talking about in terms of 400 square feet per.
Yeah, I.
I'm not aware.
I don't either, but let me, let me ask a question.
Ordinances LU 132.1, LU 132.2, LU 132.3. 400 square feet recreation space per unit. Twenty four times 400 is 9,600 square feet and shall not be located in setbacks.
Is that our township ordinances you're quoting? Yes?
Yes.
Would one of our?
That's not in our zone.
Look it up, just a second.
Okay.
That doesn't apply to this zone.
Yeah, I, okay, well, that's what I want us to.
Zone, what does apply to this zone is that you could only build five units per acre. So was that taken into consideration?
Ms. Parisi, they were already given a use variance for this.
A use variance, correct.
Yeah, which is includes the the units, the residential units.
And why are they allowed to then change the commercial part of it?
What do you mean change? All right, that's, this is getting into more comment than questions. This is more planning than engineering. So if you would hold your questions to their planner, you could ask them and our planner will look it up too, because this is more of a planning question than engineering question.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, in all fairness, I don't want to ask an engineer to do a planning question.
Appreciate it.
So are there any other questions of engineering nature by the public?
I have one more question because last I brought up the parking and the 29 feet. I did not realize that part of it was 24 feet because your comment, Mr. Chairman, was that the 29 feet was a safety issue. So is it only a safety issue in front of my house, but not the rest of the building could be 24 feet? So I'm very confused why part of it has to be 24 and part 29. Why not give me an extra five feet buffer?
So when we laid out the the parking, number one, we eliminated a variance for a buffer that existed to the residential properties to the south. We could put our parking at 10 feet off the parking or off the property line per ordinance. What we did is we ran it parallel at over 12 feet towards the western part of the parking lot when we set the building parallel to the north property line. And because that skewed, we took advantage of an extra room up closer towards the intersection where people will be coming in and out of their garages.
So is there more space between her property and the parking toward Plainfield Avenue?
There is. It starts to taper away from the property line as we get closer to Plainfield Avenue. I could pull up my screen again. It does show on that exhibit. I'll bring the same plan up.
So there's more buffer between her property?
No. Correct.
Yeah, see, see how it tapers away from you?
So here we have it at 12.2 feet, parallel where 10 is allowed. And then what we do is we tapered it up to basically the whole layout of our property is set by our intersection and the location of the driveway, as you heard, that's meeting center line to center line with the Valley Mall. So we came in, we tapered it, we have a curb return to the first double.
Kathy, what's, what's the distance to parking space 13 to her property line?
To her curb line and the property line.
Right here?
Yeah.
Let me just switch to my other plan here.
Approximately.
That is approximately 19 feet.
All right, so you're required, by ordinance, you're allowed 10 feet and you're pushing it in nine feet to 19 feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Parisi?
It answers my question, but I mean, I think that it, you know, the building being, if this was not the intended use and there's so much impervious coverage, I still don't understand why, if it could be pushed back to 24 feet opposed to 29 feet, why have an extra five feet of impervious coverage that may not be necessary?
I'm not, I'm not getting you where you meant five feet. Where you, I don't understand.
Between the parking space and the garage space.
Well, you can't have that too narrow because you need access for vehicles going both ways.
So, but when you go past my property, it's only 24 feet from the garage spaces to the parking spaces. Closer to my property, that space becomes 29 feet. That's what I'm saying.
Right, but so, but the space between the parking and your property also increases.
Right, I understand that.
And you can't block the entrance way? If you look at it.
Is there a way that it could be changed, a minor change could give her more relief and give her more of a buffer? Is that such a thing? Can that happen?
It's not possible with this layout, Mr. Ronnie. Thank you for asking, but we've, we basically pushed the envelope here and given her as much as we can.
And you do have trees in there, right?
Yes, it's thickly buffered.
You know, when their planner comes on, you might want to ask about buffering and trees.
Okay.
Because, you know, they do have that as one of their exhibits.
And Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, Kathy, it might be worth pulling up your site plan sheet S2 just to show, I mean, I know this has changed, oh, no, this area hasn't, hasn't changed because it is only 24 feet wide as you come in through the driveway and as you pass those first four or three ADA spaces, it only widens to 29 feet. Once you get beyond those spaces, which are beyond the limit of the dwelling on Lot 10, it widens out to 24 feet once the garages start, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
But then it knows down again.
Correct.
So this was all based on other parameters where we fit the building in the angles of the side property lines, the north property line. We kept the building parallel to that. That keeps it north as far as we can. Again, the fixed location of our entrance, this is down my site plans, as you indicated, S2.
I don't, I'm seeing, I'm seeing your.
Always seeing is your.
Documents library. Yeah, if you have two screens, we're looking at the wrong one.
You're showing the wrong screen.
Yeah, let me try again. Sorry about that.
Don't worry, I understand.
I had 87 things open here. How, can you see that now?
Yep, great. Okay, thank you.
So this is S2, part of our site dimension of the original application. So again, we set the building parallel to the northern lot line. We're coming in where the entrance is across the street from Valley Mall. We swing it down. We have a curb return so that the inbound traffic isn't right along the face of the building as they come onto the site. So we'll have two way traffic and a slight buffer to the building. Didn't want to have 24 feet right along the whole face of the building. So in the back, we have the parking set at 12.2 and then it widens, our driveway widens as the building runs parallel to the north property line. I can move this two feet down and make it wider. But again, I want that buffer from the travel lane. You can see this yellow fire lane that we have to create a little buffer to the face of the garages so that the 24 feet isn't measured tight from the end of the parking spaces to the face of the building. So we took advantage of that. And again, this dash line here along the southern property line is where the existing driveway is. This is the existing southern curb. So we've moved the intersection to the north and you can see we've also taken that curb line along Lot 10 and moved that to the north as well.
So in a sense, you've moved everything you could as far away from that property line as possible?
That's correct.
And you're buffering that in between?
Yes, we, there's existing trees in that area. We're adding trees in between the existing trees. And we also have a proposed six foot solid fence proposal on the property line.
Okay, so between the fence and the, and the, and the trees, you'd be lucky to see anything.
Correct. The existing trees that are there now are evergreens and they have an upper story of a buffer. I'm just switching to L1, the landscape plan. So the grayed out trees are the existing evergreens that are there today. And then we'll plant new plantings in and around them.
More plantings that have more of a buffer from the ground up?
Yes, there'll be, you know, these existing pines, you, there's a clearance underneath. So our six foot fence will cover the bottoms. Then we have the green up top and then these will be all new healthy trees that are planted for full coverage.
All right.
Kathy, was the date of that L1? Okay.
All right, Ms. Parisi, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
No, is that a no?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. I, it's hard to hear.
May I ask a follow up question on this topic that we're talking about, the buffer? I know it's not going to change anything, but just from my own knowledge here, in the current zone, what is the required setback?
10 feet.
10?
10.
And then if it were strictly a residential zone or a buffer, I'm sorry, or residential meeting commercial, what would that be? Is there a difference?
The minimum buffer of 10 feet is required when the property abuts a residential use or zone. That's noted in our zone chart for the BD commercial zone.
Okay, so whether it's residential, abutting residential or commercial, the commercial or commercial residential, it's all 10 feet in that zone?
It's, it's just that they overall zoning for the BD zone, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions by board members? Any other questions by the public? No, okay.
I'm going to ask that the public hearing be closed on for Ms. Muller?
Yes, yeah, I'm closing the public hearing for this witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My next witness is Mr. Soraco.
Okay, and what is he?
He is our architect. He's not the architect from the original. He's been brought in for the site plan redesign for this application. His name is John Soraco, Mr. Soraco. I believe you've already been sworn in.
Well, yes, but just, was he sworn in? Yeah, he was here last time?
Yes.
Okay, so you remain sworn. For the record, would you just state your credentials and that you're still licensed?
Yeah, sure. It's John Soraco on the principle of John Soraco Architect LLC located at 108 Home Street in Boonton, New Jersey. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey since 1986. I've been actively practicing since then and I'm in front of boards on a monthly basis locally. I've been in front of Berkeley Heights, Warren, Wachung, to name a few towns.
Fine, you're an expert.
Thank you.
And you have been sworn in and you're still sworn. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. So, Mr. Soraco, you've been brought in as the architect for the site plan aspect of this application, correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the relief that was previously granted by this board?
Yes, I am, yes.
So you prepared and or supervised the preparation of the architectural floor plans and elevations and renderings for this application, correct?
Yes, I have.
All right, what I'd like you to do is this is the, this is what you're showing the board is part of the plan set, correct?
Yes.
It's the cover sheet, in fact.
Yes.
All right, would you just talk to the board a little bit about the materials, colors, et cetera?
Sure, we took a, so this is drawing PB 100 dated 7/30/21. The building, we took, we took an approach where we wanted to make a stronger statement, a little with the, with the materials and the geometry. we wanted to make a stronger statement, a little um with the, with, with the materials and the geometry um and the detailing um up front on, on the street and uh with the, with the precast concrete base um with brick, with two different color bricks accentuating the different geometries in the facade and with an AZAC, um, two levels of AZAC cornerses with very strong detailing. Um, we put this forward. Um, and then in, once we get past, this is the residential entrance, the lobby entrance under a portico. And what, and this is the driveway entrance that Kathy was just speaking about. Once we get past this portico, we took a different approach and really began lightening the building up with hardy plank siding um and a much more uh residential feel to it, where this has a more more of a, little more of a commercial feel to it. Um, so that was the general approach um to take. We didn't want to carry a commercial feel all the way through the back of the site. Um, again, you know, we, we have two-tone brick, AZAC trim, uh, precast um trim at the base. Um, this is aluminum storefront. Uh, we have six over one uh nice residential feel windows to it with, with precast lintels. Um, a very nice portico when you walk out the entrance door from the lobby. People are covered, waiting for Uber, waiting for someone to pick them up or whatever the situation. When we get further back, these are all those um tandem garage doors. Uh, I'll walk you through the plans in a minute that Kathy pointed out on the plan. Um, and um, again, we use two tones of hardy plank siding and a more modest cornice line uh when we go towards the back of the building. Um, while I'm on this drawing, just want to point out the, the unit count. Um, we have twenty-four you, twenty-four residential units total, mostly two bedrooms. Um, basically what this means is we're going to have a more stable tenancy than if we had more one, one bedrooms or even studios. Generally, two-bedroom tenants tend to stay longer. Um, so we're looking at a very, very stable residential base, not very, very few move-ins. Um, there'll probably be less than one movement a month, I'm sure. Um, and of these, and we have um the two three-bedroom units. Um, of these twenty-four units, three of them will be affordable. We're going to have one one-bedroom affordable, one-two-bedroom affordable, and one-three-bedroom affordable.
And that's in accordance with uh UHAC regulations, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Um, overall square footage of the building is forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand square feet. Um, just walking through the plans a bit. I'm looking at the first floors. This is PB two hundred. Walking through the plans a bit, um, we see the nineteen hundred square foot of retail. What the, we, we are providing two entrances for the retail for the possibility of two separate tenants. Um, there's a real possibility it might be one tenant. We, we can't really predict that at this point, but we did allow for two separate entrances. Um, again, the portico um for the residential entrance. Once you walk into the lobby, we accounted for the much stronger demand of mail and parcel um situations with the new world we're living in with Amazon deliveries. Um, so we provided a, a larger parcel room that was in the previous plan that went in to the board previously. Um, an elevator serving the upper floors. This is one of our, we have two means of egress from the upper floors, a stair in the front, a stair in the back. Walking past the lobby, we get into these amenities spaces. We have a lounge um and a gym area and, and a gym that would be open to the side yard on the north side of the building that Kathy um spoke about quite a bit. Um, moving further down this corridor, we have all our garage doors. Entering into the, um, the, these are pedestrian doors from the corridor um from these um two-car garages. So someone would pull the car in and they can shut the garage door and they could walk, they don't have to walk under the garage door to get into the building. We provided doors from the garage door, from the garages, private garages into this service, into this corridor here. We do, we are providing a very large storage area. Um, this storage area is large enough to provide a five-by-six-foot um storage bin for all of, for each of the twenty-four tenants. Whether the, um, whether the, um, Mr. Rocker will divide it up that way or not is really up to market demand, but the room is there to provide individual storage for every unit five by six. And we are assuming that that's where bicycle storage would occur in this area. Um, we are providing trash chutes. I don't walk it through the upper floors, from the upper floors down to a trash room. Um, so the tenants would throw their garbage out in a trash chute on the upper floors. We'll come down to a trash room on the ground floor. Um, the building maintenance people will then have the responsibility to haul that trash from this room um to, for the garbage truck pickup in the back of the building two, three times a week, depending on what the, with the garbage pickup schedule is. We're walking further down this corridor. We have our second means of egress. And then we have a utility room. And then um all the way in the back, this is the back door that Kathy mentioned, that some tenants parking way in the back might walk in through the service corridor to get to the main lobby. And then, of course, we have the three parking spaces which are um indicated on Kathy's plan that are, these cars back up into the um into the driveway system in the back of the building, which is indicated on her plan. When we go to the second, oops, sorry about that, when we go to the second floor, um, we begin to see the individual apartments. Um, and um, just to walk you through a typical apartment, a typical two-bedroom, most of our apartments are two-bedrooms. Um, we, we always provide a, we were always providing a um, a primary bedroom with its own private bathroom, a full bathroom with a shower, walk-in closet. Um, the second bathroom, we put right across from a bathroom that's not tied into the bedroom, but it's right across the bedroom, so anybody can use this bathroom. Again, it's a three-fиксьr bathroom. Every unit will have its own washer dryer, its own hot water. And um will have its own individual heating system for their own uh heating and cooling control uh for each individual apartment. Um, we, this, this apartment on the um second floor behind the elevator, this third three-bedroom unit will be a COA unit. Um, I'm sorry, an affordable unit. The second affordable unit will be a two-bedroom um located down the hall. This two-bedroom unit, we are out, we are designating for affordable unit. And we're, the third affordable unit will be a one-bedroom on the third floor. Um, and this is the, so this is our, come off the elevator. We have the one, the front means of egress here, walk down the corridor. We get to the second means of egress in the back. And we have our trash room way in the back that with the two trash chutes, one for general garbage, the other one for recyclables that go down to the trash room I pointed out on the first floor. Um, I should point out that we are providing balconies for some of the apartments only on the north side of the building. We have no balconies on the um east, south, or west side of the building, a limited number of balconies. Um, when we go to the third floor, it's really the same floor plan as the second floor. The only difference is that this one-bedroom here will be assigned as the one-bedroom for the affordable unit. We like to spread the affordable units out throughout the building. And I should point out that the affordable units will have the exact same services that the market rates have. They have their own washer dryer, their own hot water, their own um individually controlled heating and air conditioning. And the level of finishes will, will be the same as the market rate apartments.
I'm sorry.
The, the, the roof plan, um, again, I'm sorry, I'm on page PB two oh one. The roof plan, um, it's basically a flat roof. There is a very minor half-inch per, per uh foot pitch, just a minor pitch, but it's essentially a flat roof. Um, what is popping up on the roof, we have the elevator bulkhead. Um, we have no stair bulkheads coming up to the roof. And we will, the trash chute will have an exhaust that pops up around three feet from the roof. The elevator bulkhead pops up around four feet from the roof. We will have an access hatch from the stairwell, the top stairwell for service to the roof. And we will have some, I didn't indicate it, I apologize, it'll be on our compliance drawings. Hopefully, if we get that far, um, we, there will be some air conditioning compressors um on the roof for the amenities spaces, heating and air conditioning for the hallways. And um I should point out that the front units um will not have louvered unit, louvered, heating and air conditioning, want to keep louvers off the front of the building. Therefore, they will be requiring compressors on the roof. So there will be probably around eight air conditioning compressors on the roof. Um, and um that will be indicated in a following set of drawings. Walking through the elevations, these are a little bland compared to the rendering. Um, this is the south elevation. We have um the main street on the front. This is our uh, the portico entering into the lobby. Um, this is incorrect. There won't be storefront here. I apologize for that. I'm just, I'm just picking this up now. Let me go to the, let me go to the rendering. This would be glass here. This will be corrected, hopefully, again, if we get to the point of compliance. And if I go to the first floor plan, I'm sorry for skipping around, we're only proposing retail doors in the front. This should have been full glass in the south elevation. I apologize for that. Um, we could see the overhead doors for, for the um tandem garage parking spaces. And we can see the hardy plank siding towards the back of the building. There was some question about an opening in our wall that we're showing for the six parking spaces in the back. Um, quickly going back to the first floor. Um, this is three, six parking spaces that are open to the driveway in the back. Um, there was some question regarding these openings I'm showing here that Kathy didn't show on her drawings. These openings are here to provide natural ventilation uh for carbon monoxide fumes, things like that. Um, so going back to that, that's this opening here that um I believe Samantha questioned in her review letter. Um, this is the east elevation facing the street. Um, we have no louvers on this elevation. When we go to the back elevation, these are those six parking spaces with two floors above. Um, the building height, I should point out, is thirty-four foot six. That's measured um to the parapet of the roof. We do, and then when we get to the north elevation, um, the streets on the left side all the way here. Again, there won't be doors here. This will be all windows. One of the board members last month questioned the storefront from the amenities spaces. This is all the large glass openings and doors for the amenities spaces. Um, is storefronts really a generic term for basically aluminum entry systems and large windows? So I'm sorry for the confusion there. There's no retail here. This is the the lounge area and the gym. Storefront's just a generic term for that aluminum entrance system that we'll be putting there. Um, and again, these are the balconies that we have on the uh north elevation and the HVAC louvers that are occurring everywhere except for the units in the front. We don't want to provide uh louvers in the front brick. Um, and that's, that's, um, I think that kind of takes us
Can you stay right there? You see a, a, a ground-mounted sign in the front, correct?
Yes.
And the signage will be compliant with the zoning ordinance and there's no change from the original use variance application in terms of dimensions and, and the type of sign, correct?
Correct.
Okay, with respect to the board planner's comment, um discusses the reduction of retail space from twenty-three ninety-nine to nineteen hundred square feet. Was this done to provide some more amenities space for the twenty-four rental units?
Um, it wa, it was, it was, it was a combination of amenities space and building services, just to walk you through. For instance, the original plans um didn't have a, a male parcel area, parcel area, which we feel is absolutely essential. That's a basic essential amenity for any uh apartment building this day and age. Um, there was no elevator machine room provided, which is essential. Um, we have a, we have a very generous lounge, a very generous trim. We have a large storage area allowing um each tenant to have its own space, and there was no trash room um in the original plan. So when you take all these building amenities and all these additional service spaces, it basically um brought us down to the nineteen hundred square foot retail.
Will there be any other condensers um other than the eight that you mentioned uh on the roof uh for this building? And, and I know that these are magic packs or whatever you call them that will be will be servicing the residential units, so they'll have their own louvers, correct?
Um, yes, they, they will, yeah, that's for the apartments. The apartments have their own HVAC unit. There'll be a louver um out the wall, right?
So are there any other condensers that are going to be ground-mounted um other than the eight on the roof?
Um, there, depending on the retail demand, um, there, there could be some ground-mounted um condensers, and that really comes out more in construction drawings and when the tenants start coming in. But there's a real possibility there might be a couple more uh ground-mounted uh condensers, yeah.
But not on the side of Mrs. Parisi's uh property, correct?
No, no, they would all be located on this side. And I should just also point out that on this wall too, we'll have our electrical and gas meters located on this wall, the north side.
In terms of the roof-mounted um condensers, will, will they be screened in, in any way?
Um, they don't, they don't need to be. Um, Samantha questioned whether the roof head bulkhead, the, the elevator bulkhead would be seen from the street. And in this rendering, um, after her comments, we did um did, do an analysis and, and this view is at eye-level view. This isn't a bird's eye view. It's not like laying on the ground. This is a true, uh, you know, person view. Um, that bulkhead does not pop up above this um, this parapet. And the condensers are located further back, um, and they definitely won't be seen.
With respect to uh the planner's comment number thirteen, um, these will be, as I said, they will be for the apartments, they'll be what you call magic pack units?
Uh, yeah, that's a, that's one particular company that makes these, yeah, it's an industry.
Um, and since the comments of the board engineer are relatively the same as the board planner, there's really no need to go through both of those reports, correct?
Um, no, I don't believe so. I think we addressed um pretty much everything that came up in the reports.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Um, one thing I forgot to do, Gary, did you certify that you watched the last, the video of the last uh meeting? Gary? Mr. Janakis?
Oh, it's muted. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You did, you did watch the, the last meeting?
I did. I said that I did. I don't know if
I know I did, but I just want to make sure because we didn't formally say it. Okay, and okay, great, terrific. So Deborah will send you whatever you have to sign. Uh, I have a question
Okay.
Before we, we go any further. This building changed quite a bit from the original drawing or the original rendering, rendering that we looked at when we, we, we originally um uh, you know, uh, voted on the use and the bulk. Uh, what was the reasoning behind that? Uh, if you could tell us?
Sure, I mean, the other building, I, I mean, my personal opinion, it's a very subjective um topic, but my personal opinion, it was a very, very noisy building. Um, there was a lot going on with different materials, different geometries, different things going on. Um, and I just felt, my personal opinion, it was, I felt it was inappropriate. And I just felt, my personal opinion, it was felt, I felt it was inappropriate for the site. Um, I think it was just attracting too much attention to itself and we just wanted a calmer building. With, with the more subtle palette, a more subtle color palette. Um, and we believe we achieved that.
Well, besides the color, which you can change on either building. Why did you get rid of the gables and the peaks? Because there was something mentioned in the resolution on page um. Four, I believe. It was mentioned that um. I think it was page four, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. Mister uh, Campanella testified with regard to the exterior of the building. The architect, the architecture will contain gables and hip roofs in accordance with the township's version of the village look. That, that was something that was said by your, one of your witnesses. And now we don't have a village look anymore. We have a, I don't know, what, what would you call that?
Well, I think he identified it as very commercial looking in the front.
Yeah. I, I'm just, I'm just having a hard time reconciling the. The fact that initially we were told that it was gonna be gables and hip roofs in a village look. And now we're presented with something that doesn't have gables. Or, and I understand your, your taught, your, your apprehension about colors and textures. But that can be changed. I mean, that can be altered. Uh, I was just curious as to. Why it wasn't um, why the um. Original vending wasn't just made more um. You know, I mean, you have brick, you have siding, I mean, yeah, there's a lot going on with the different sidings, but. What was the reason why we couldn't just change the siding and make it a little more consistent?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't just the colors that I referred to, it was also, there were just so many different geometries going on with different. You know, shapes and different roof lines and gables, mansards. It just seemed to be a very, very noisy building.
Define your term noisy, you, you use that term.
Well, I'm trying to be, be polite, I just didn't think it was a very attractive building. And I think it, I just think, didn't think it was appropriate for this type of street setting. I think, I think it was just attracting way too much attention to itself and I just really wanted to tone it down.
Okay, may I follow up on that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Could you please um, stop sharing the screen just for one second?
I'm pretty sure.
Uh, sure, give me one second.
Great, thank you. Are you familiar with the testimony that was provided from the uh, previous uh, application for the use variance?
Uh, no, I'm not, no.
Okay. Are you aware that the previous architect as part of the, the uh, mitigations for the number of stories? Indicated that the building would be presented as a, as the chairman said, as a. As a village style building, essentially presenting as a two-story building with an elaborate, as you would say, noisy roofs that would essentially. Make the third story look as if it were a roof of a residential structure?
Uh, well, I saw the building, I saw what he was trying to achieve and um, it's a three-story building.
I understand that, but testimony was given regarding how that building presented to both the street and to the neighbors. So my question was. Are you aware that the previous designed architect as a mitigation for the number of stories and the use variance that was previously granted? Said the aesthetics of the building would be such that it would present as a two-story building with a third-story roof type structure?
I don't believe he mitigated anything. It's still a three-story. Let me, let me.
I, I, I will let you respond. I, I appreciate what you're saying, but what I asked you was, were you aware of that's what was testified to?
No, I, I, I'm not aware of the testimony of that previous hearing. But my comment is, is that he didn't mitigate anything. We have the same building height, we're extremely similar building height. It's still, he still had a three-story building. We have a three-story building. I'm just presenting a much quieter building um, that I believe is more appropriate for this context.
Okay, so, and, and I appreciate that, thank you. And in knowing that only two stories are permitted in this zone and that this board granted relief to allow three stories in this zone. And that the previous testimony was that the design as, as presented was a mitigation to that, to that relief that was, that was being proposed. How is the proposed facade that you're designing in um, keeping with what was previously. Proposed as a mitigation to three stories that the board considered under the use variance?
Well, as I said, I don't believe the previous design mitigated anything. It, I think it was just words more than anything else. There were still. There were still two residential floors above the garage and retail. If you counted the windows, you would just count them. He simply put mansard roofs and some, I, I really haven't looked at it in months. He put all this embellishment to make it sound as if it's not a three-story building. But when you walk down the street or if you're in the parking garage. It's gonna feel like a three-story building and I think it's gonna, and I, my opinion was that it feels more imposing as a three-story building. Than the three-story building we're proposing, since I tried to calm it down a bit. So that was my approach to your. Issue at hand.
Okay, I, I do appreciate that, but I can tell you that certainly was not what was presented to this board previously. And that was not what was considered when the three-story variance was granted. So. I do appreciate your opinion, I, I, a professional opinion, I, I do understand what you're saying. Uh, however. I can, I can tell you there, that, that was not what the board considered when that use variance was granted. Now, uh, moving on regarding your, your testimony regarding the. Uh, visibility of the condenser units on the roof. You had mentioned that they're not visible from the street. Are they visible from the second story of the adjacent residential uh, houses?
Uh, we didn't do that study. I, I could do that study. My gut feeling is. Uh, without the luxury of the, of doing that study is that they would probably be visible from the second floor, yes.
Okay, and what is the height of those units of, uh, the top of those units above grade? Um, once they're installed?
Well, the, the units on the roof are approximately thirty-six inches high, maybe forty-two inches high above the roof. Um, above the roof line and then the elevator bulkhead. Will pop up about, about four feet, maybe four foot six inches above the roof line.
Okay, so what I'm getting at is, under the, if this board were to require screening on the units, the residential units as well as the. Potential bulkhead, what is the height of, the top height of those elements from grade?
I, I have to refer, can I share the screen again, if you don't mind?
Sure.
So I could just see the um. So the building height is. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not zooming properly here, I'm sorry. The building height is thirty-four six. We add um, three feet to that for the air conditioning units. From grade, it would be um, thirty-seven six.
Okay, and that would exceed the allowable height per ordinance?
I believe it's my, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe that. Air conditioning units, elevator bulkheads are excluded um, from the definition of building height. And I should also point out um, that um, pretty much every. Sightline study that I've ever done in New Jersey um, was always from street level and not from second floor windows.
I, I understand that you are operating under a use variance here and you're subject to this board for site approval. And if, if the way this building presents to the adjacent properties is important to the board, this will need to be addressed.
I'm just expressing my experience, that's all.
Understood. But, so the question that I had was, to the top of any required screening and to the top of the elevator bulkhead, do you exceed? The height per ordinance for this structure?
I, I'm, I'm not, I would have to check the definition.
Can I just interrupt? I'm sorry to interrupt. You, you can provide mechanicals, those kind of things, can it go up to fifteen feet above per the ordinance?
I also wanted, I also wanted to chime in as, as well.
Sorry, one thirty-six point one height modifications uh, B.
Also, Mr. Soraco, you were giving us the distance from the roof parapet elevation, were you not? Is, i- it's my understanding that the roof itself is lower than the parapet. You have a parapet extending. I, I, unfortunately, it doesn't look like it's, it's noted on your architectural plans, but if I'm not mistaken, you're, the, the roof is lower than the parapets. So if you have a thirty-six inch high condenser, if you have a thirty-six inch high parapet, it wouldn't stick up at all, is that correct?
Um, yeah, I was being, I, w- well, the parapet's not thirty-six inches.
Correct, but I, just for argument's sake.
Depending on where the roof is pitching and things like that, I was being conservative.
Gotcha. Do, do you have a general idea of how high those parapets are? You know, so we can kind of.
From the roof line where it meets.
Right, so we can talk more about the roof elevation, not the, not the elevation of the.
Yeah, so again, let me just go to the roof plan, if you don't mind. If I can find it.
Can I ask a question while he's doing that? The, what you described about, you know, beyond uh, per ordinance, it can go, you know, thirty-six inches above. Is that um. Before it's uh, approved by variance?
Yeah, let me read you, it's actually fifteen feet. Um, and let me read.
After it's approved by variance, it can still be fifteen feet above?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so let me just read it to you. So chimneys, ventilators, skylights, water tanks, television and radio antennas. Similar features and necessary mechanical appurtenances usually carried on and above the roof level. May exceed the height limitation of this ordinance by not more than fifteen feet. If such equipment is constructed as a secondary structure, then, which is not the case here. Um, but yes, so that's, that's.
That includes uh, elevator shafts.
Included the elevator bulkhead?
It says necessary mechanical appurtenances, um, usually.
Yeah, but how does that, how does that exceed the variance that they were granted? I mean, that's from the standard ordinance building height, that's not. Yeah, I see your point, Gary.
Uh, so you're saying, oh, invitations order.
We didn't, we didn't grant them a, a, a height variance plus fifteen feet, we granted them a height variance.
Right, but the ordinance says they can go fifteen feet above that.
Yeah.
No, the ordinance says they can go fifteen feet above our standard ordinance height, not fifteen feet above what we grant them.
Just as a clarification, did we grant a height variance or a story variance? We didn't grant a height variance.
No.
Right.
Correct.
So it was no.
The height variance is thirty-five feet, right?
Yes. The height, the height, there was no variance for height.
No, they, they're within the uh, height.
Okay, so the height, I'm sorry, excuse me, let me rephrase that, the, the height uh, maximum is thirty-five feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And what, and so what are we talking about? How many feet above that?
Not much at all.
But that, for, I guess the applicant is, is testifying to that.
Okay. So it's, they're in. Okay, sorry about that.
But I have a question to the parapet. Nowhere on this roof diagram does it say how high the parapet is from the. From the level of the roof.
I, I agree, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's the information I was uh. I, I think we need, we need a little more information on that to get that.
Right, but, but I, but I just want to be clear that we measured our building height. From the highest roof parapet.
No, no.
Absolutely, yeah, not, not questioning the building.
Here is how high the parapet is and how much of the utilities will it hide.
Correct, exactly.
How high is the parapet from the, the, where the roof meets it?
It's, it's gonna be a, a pro- between, between twelve and eighteen inches, because.
Okay, so you got about twelve to eighteen inches of a forty, thirty-six inch unit being hit?
Right, correct. The ele- the elevator bulkhead is popping up. Approximately, you know, four feet, maybe four and a half feet above the roof, so. You take out the eighteen inches or so, it's maybe popping up three and a half feet.
Okay.
Above the parapet.
So if I could just uh, follow up on, finish up uh, the questions I have. Regarding your other elevation, I believe you showed there were some mechanical louvers coming out the second and third story of this building. Do you provide some testimony regarding how that particular aesthetic of having mechanical louvers out the side of the buildings? Is consistent with semi-rural aesthetic design as, as established by the uh, master plan of the township rather than urban design?
Um, well, particularly because of the material we're using, which is hardy plank siding. We're using double hung windows, six over one double hung windows. On the north side, we are introducing uh, balconies. Uh, which give it a very residential feel to it, a very softer feel. Um, and we are not bringing this much heavier cornice line. We're not bringing it around the back, we have a much simpler cornice line. So we, we believe that we tone the building down. As it gets away from, from the street.
So my, my question was. Having a building facade with multiple mechanical outputs. How is that consistent with a semi-rural design of aesthetic architecture? As opposed to concealing the mechanical uh. The mechanical elements so that it looks like more typically residential?
I, I understand what you're saying, okay. So, so these louvers, they're about two foot by three foot. And we, we do um, specify that they get painted the same color as the siding. Around them. And um, when you look at um, any of the buildings I've done and, you know, over the years. The louvers absolutely do not scream out at you. They, they quietly blend in. You can, you, if you look for them, you're gonna see them. If somebody points them out, you're gonna say, yes, that's a louver. But they are not these, um, they, they're, they're not glaring at you by any means. So to answer your question, we're gonna require that they're painted the same color as the siding they're up against.
And as one final question, um. In terms of this being a, now what's being presented as a, essentially a three-story brick facade presenting to Plainfield and the adjacent neighbors. And towards the front there. How is that consistent with the character of the neighborhood where previously what was presented was a two-story and a roof? Which is more in keeping with the residential properties adjacent as well as some of the commercial properties adjacent?
I, I, I mean, it's, it's my opinion, um, this, this fits in better. I, I, as I said, it, I, I think I said it three times, I think it has a quieter feel to it. And, and I think it's, it's not gonna um, detract from everything that else is going on the street. Um, and that was our intention.
Okay, you mentioned that it fits in better. Can you please give me an example where this is occurring in the, in the character of this neighborhood?
Well, it, it fits in better than what the previous design, which, which there was so much going on with it. So many different angles, roof lines, mansards. That it was just attracting so much attention to it and I just calmed it way down.
Okay, well, uh, what I, what I can say is that I do, I do understand your opinion. I'm not sure if it's shared by all the members of the board.
Okay.
You, you know, I, I just wanted to say one thing, the Goddard School is one thing, there was the same kind of design, but. You know, it, it, it's, if you wanna see a side-by-side comparison of what was there before, what was before and then current. You know, we can do that, Mr. Johnson.
I, I've, I've done it, I've seen it, I, I know. Both renderings.
Yeah, could you have?
Yeah, I, I, I believe I have it, if, if you give me, if you give me one. If you give me one second. I, I'm presenting something that I didn't, that I didn't.
Yeah.
That's understood.
I'm very uncomfortable talking about another architect's work.
You, you don't, we don't have any other views of this.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, if we're gonna speak about this, I think this needs to be an exhibit.
Okay, you wanna mark it then? What's the next exhibit?
This is A five.
Okay.
Okay, so, so my point is, is if you're standing in the street. I count one, two, three floors. Not only do I count one, three floors, but I see five different things going on here. I see different angles. I see cornices, I see mansards, I see standing seam roofs, I see bricks. I, there's just so much, it's just s- so much going on here. Um, and, and we all know that these mansards, windows popping through with these mansards are just horrendous. This, when you look at this three dimensionally, which, which wasn't done here. There's, there's a funny triangle here and we all know how ugly that looks. When you put a mansard over a full floor, it just doesn't, it just, it just reads as tacky and. You're, you're pushing me and I'm gonna state my opinion. I personally think it's a tacky design. Uh, I, I, I would never present anything like this to a town. It, I just don't, I just don't like. Um, it I just don't. I just don't like it. Um, and and that's the position we take, and and there is no way. Any anyone can tell you this reads as a two story building despite what was in the testimony. It's a three story building, period.
Certainly, I certainly appreciate it. If I can finish, I certainly appreciate your 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 position. I disagree with you. I happen to like this design, and I think this is more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood than what's currently presented.
Okay.
Is there any way you could have taken this design and cleaned up cleaned it up a bit, but left the the sloping roofs like we see in this? But, you know, like combine some of those windows or i- in your opinion as an architect, could you have cleaned this up and still left it as looking more like um a slope roofs and things like that?
Well, w- this isn't a sloped roof. This is a mansard that's tacked on to the vertical wall of the building. So it's protruding, it's protruding. It's protruding past the exterior wall. It isn't a sloped roof. It's a mansard. So uh but to answer your question, um, could I have worked with this? Um, more than I have rather than departing from this. Um, yes, I I could have. Um, I believe that would and it's a very subjective situation um that our solution was more suitable, but to answer your question, yes, we could have worked with this.
Okay, just what Mr. Johnson, just so you know, my client wanted to to um do the best job he could, so he went to Mr. Soraco, who's been doing this for a long time and wanted to do something special. And that's why he presented the plan he did. Uh, certainly, there's room for compromise, I hope. Um, and and you know, the this is a mixed use area, so there's really no dominant character. Um, so I you know, I throw that out there. We brought Mr. Soraco in because of his expertise and because of his uh s- specialties. And we thought that Mr. Rocker just loved the design, so uh if you think that there's something that can be done to compromise, we're we're more than willing to listen.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, uh, any other questions from board members?
I have a question.
Yes, yeah.
Um.
You can take this down.
Okay.
The uh showing.
So just uh we were talking a little bit. You were talking a little bit about the mechanical ventilation uh louvers.
Sure.
Uh, have you already? Has someone already identified what type of mechanicals are there and if they would be used and if they would require such a large louver? A lot of high efficiency systems sometimes are just requiring smaller ventilation PVC pipes uh maybe at the side, maybe at the roofs, maybe up a a chase um for for their ventilation. So I don't know why the louvers are required uh for these.
Well, um. It's so i- the louvers aren't big. They're two foot by three foot. Um, but. You know, for for handling, for bringing heating and air conditioning for almost an eleven hundred square foot apartment. Um, but this is a system. This is one system that is used um extensively throughout um this this region. Um, there are PTAC systems that are used in many apartments. Those are those units that sit under a window and the louvers are under the window. And um, I'm sorry, um, but those have similar size louvers. Um, there in we could go to electric heat, which wouldn't have any louvers. Um, we do wanna work with gas heat. It's um it's it's a more efficient heating system. Um, it's uh it saves the tenants money generally. Um, so once you introduce a gas heating system, um, y- you have to get into the louver situation to get to the combustion air in and out of the HVAC unit. So.
Yeah. Well, are you are you saying you've never seen a a a heating unit uh powered by gas that uses a, I don't know, three or four inch diameter PVC pipe? And in your opinion, would a three or four inch diameter PVC pipe be smaller than or larger than a two foot by three foot louver?
Right, so those are direct vent units, and yes, they're they definitely they're definitely out there. Um, and there are positives and negatives to those. And um, what we find is that developers um tend to go with either the magic pack type unit that we're providing or PTAC uh simply because of the cost effectiveness of them. The the availability um for parts and they're just they're just out there so much. Um, now, that's not to say um that we couldn't put in a different HVAC system that didn't have smaller louvers. Um, but as I said, these these louvers do not become a prominent part of the building. If you painted the same color of the siding, and we are going out of our way not to put them on the front of the building. We're gonna do split systems in the front of the building.
Okay, uh, and then I guess I have another question about the front of the building. Would you would you characterize it as uh something that would fit in uh an area that abuts residential zones or one that abuts commercial zones?
Well, I think just the nature of the windows, I think the scaling of I think the massing of the building. Um, and I think the um the the articulations we did in the footprint of the building um allows it to fit both into a residential type setting and also it could hold its own um against the strip mall across the street or a daycare center across the street. I think it I think I was able to bridge um both both scenarios uh with this design.
What was the reason for changing to the hardy board towards the rear of the building?
Um, I just wanted to bring a softer material towards the back of of a more residential feel as we go deeper into the site and we get away from.
That's what I that's what I thought you said. So what about bringing more of a residential feel to the front of the building?
That that's a possibility.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, that's definitely a possibility.
What would you do to make it more residential looking? In the front.
So I I mean, i- i- if 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 you would like to see less brick in the front. We would be more than happy to entertain and design with more brick in the front. Um, I just.
Could you put the hardy boy uh along the areas that are between these cut these bump outs?
Yeah. Yeah, we could do that. We do that on many buildings. I you know, it's it's like really funny because many many towns I go in front of and many boards I'm in front of, they insist on more brick. Um, so we were trying to put our right foot forward and put all the brick up there. Um, and when we provide half brick and half hardy plank, sometimes a risk happen when we didn't do all brick. But we have absolutely no problem providing hardy plank siding mixed with some brick um in the front, and I could definitely make that look look attractive if that's.
But I don't know. I mean, like, are we talking about like nine different architectural opinions? Because I I'm not so sure that it's the brick material itself that makes the building not look like it belongs there. I think it's the actual style of the building more so than the ingredients that are used on the outside.
You the more pronounced cornices in the front as opposed to the rear?
No, I like I think what we were talking about earlier, uh, what Vice Chairman Johnson was talking about before, which was the angles and all of that. This building to me, if we're gonna talk about the architecture right now, this looks more like a an urban dwelling rather than uh something that's trying to, you know, keep with our historic rural character of the past. This doesn't nail it. I love the building. It's beautiful, but it doesn't belong here.
But I I think that's what I think that's what a lot of us are feeling.
The gorgeous building.
Jeff, I have, you 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 know how I work. I have I work, you know, I worked through a lot of this. I have no problem um working with whoever I have to work with in the town to evolve the the design of the building. I have no problem. I just don't know, you know, how we move this process along here.
Yeah, let me ask Mr. Chairman.
Um, yes.
Mr. uh Soraco is more than willing to sit down with someone who could give him some suggestions, and he he's very flexible. He's very easy to deal with. Um, so uh, you know, it's not gonna be a problem if you want the front of the building to be modified to what you you had before. It's not. It's not gonna be a problem.
I I don't know quite whether it has to be exactly what we've shown before because that is a a hot spot of bringing it to its stone and and that. It may be, you know, maybe the uh the uh uh the exact uh materials could be worked with, but somewhat soften up. I guess what what I'm hearing from my board is that the front looks like a flat building as opposed to something with a little bit more lie, a little bit more character to it.
Can I make a sorry, can I make a suggestion? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, to cut you off, but I one thing, there are design guidelines in the ordinance that you might wanna take a look at because I think what may help is actually modifying the roof line. I'm not so sure it is the materials per se, but it may be uh that the flat roof line, it the the design guidelines really encourage um pitch roofs, hip roofs. And that may help um present a more residential nature to the building.
Yeah.
If, Mr. Chairman, if if I may, while we've been talking, I I took a look at Mr. Soraco's website, which he has some really lovely designs posted, and quite frankly, I I think that something like the Bedminster project with the the uh commercial on the bottom and the peaked roofs residential on the second and third floors. Hearing what everybody's saying, I think that that if you take a look at that, that's probably more in line with what is envisioned with the ordinance um and in keeping with the, you know, feel of the township.
Mrs. Brennan, I yes, I actually worked with Mr. Soraco on that project. I know what you're talking about. John, you know the Bedminster site uh very well, so maybe you can work with Ms. Lahany uh and we could we could come back with something that might be palatable for the board.
This this is this is very easy um to do. Um, if I'm just in Berkeley, if can I show them a project in Berkeley Heights?
Sure.
You just gotta, if 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 you don't mind, just to just to just to really confuse the process here.
Uh, we'd like to see some other options, yeah.
Okay, so this is.
You know, I don't think anybody would.
This is a building that's almost completed right across the street from the new town hall in Berkeley Heights.
Oh, it's a beautiful pitched roof.
Well, it's a pitched roof. That's all I'm showing you, right? I opened it. So this is the building that we're that's I think it's pretty much done. The exterior is pretty much done.
This this is more aligned with they and and this actually looks nicer than the original one, but this is this, in my opinion, I think on my board opinion is this is more a residential look.
Okay, this can happen. Mr. Soraco. This this will happen. Can I bring this in as an exhibit?
Yes, are you able to print this out and submit it as an exhibit?
Yes, A six.
A six, okay.
And you said this is in New Providence?
I'm sorry, no, it's in uh Berkeley Heights, right across the street from the um from the new town hall they're building.
Is that a asphalt roof or is that um something different?
No, it's an it's a timberline asphalt shingle roof. So but this gets into little issues here though, because this is our building height here. This would be our thirty five foot, whatever it is, building height. So this is gonna pop up a little bit. You know, that's that's the liberties you have to take. So if the board is willing to work with me um with giving me a little liberty in terms of allowances um in the definition that we spoke about earlier to allow this to pop up a little bit, we can give you this this type of feel.
Well, that, see, the problem is uh that that if we if you start getting into height variances, then you didn't notify for that, but.
Well, we did do a general, we did provide the general language.
Okay, you did, right. But also, I I would hope you could work with this design and still keep it in the height limits. Um, if that if you could, I mean, that would be much.
We'll try. The 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 quick, this isn't, this is inhabitable space up here.
Right, right.
This is this is just over framing. Um, you know, almost like a bulkhead, you know, a stair. You had a stair bulkhead coming up. It wouldn't be any taller than this, or this isn't any taller than a stair bulkhead. So so the question is is whether, you know, Liz is comfortable working with something like this in the language of the um of of the height um exclusions.
Or you could start that roof a little lower and end it a little bit less.
Yeah, we could play around. Yeah, yeah.
So can you also include?
The process, yes.
You also include the Bedminster project that was mentioned earlier by one of our board members? As something that can you can you show that actually? Can you share a screen and show that?
Probably got it somewhere, right?
No, no, I I have.
Um, it's a gorgeous project, yeah.
We just have a lot going on here. We call it Lamington Road.
Do we know what the height of that was?
Um, well, that was a funny sight. Um. Let me just see.
But it doesn't have to be exactly like that. I mean, you could, you know, modify it to fit this space.
I I'm I'm afraid I'm gonna put something on the screen that's not the final one. Just hold on. I might. Yeah, it was it was. This is pretty close to where we were.
Mark this as A seven?
Yeah.
Right, but again, the height was measured to the midpoint of the roof, so this pitched roof idea would never work.
But that's that's a a style that we're looking at.
It's a it's a style, but but I can but but this but the pitched roof is so inherent in the style that I could never achieve um this look um with your height limitations.
Mr. Soraco, did you say that was in Bedminster?
Yeah, this on Lamington Road, right at, you know, where right on the corner of two oh six. That again, these are almost finished. Both of these are, I I I believe this one, it's all the exterior is finished, and I believe they're working on the exterior on this one. Lamington Road right on um right, right off of two oh six, right?
Right where it meets two oh six.
Yeah.
I have no expertise in this area, but I like I think that what we're looking at is the angles, um, the the windows, uh, the trim, that sort of thing, the 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 brick along with the the uh what might be hardy plank, might be some other material and the stone on the bottom, more so than like a large, straight uh masonry building that you might find more in an urban setting. Maybe you would find that in a Summit or a Westfield or something like that. That make sense?
It it, yeah, this is very, this is very, very easy for me. I I could I could. I just wish I just wish this came out earlier and I would have been able to present, you know, an alternate um, you know, in this hearing, but unfortunately, that didn't happen. So I I mean, I could I could easily work through this. Again, Jeff, it's a question of what the process becomes from here on out. We would all like to see the project move forward. Um, you know, but this is a little back and forth process.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Is it true that the the board members talked to Ms. Lahany? I I I'm not sure I'm pronouncing her name right. Uh, and and then they they report to Mr. Soraco and she she is the point person to work.
Sure, exactly.
That's fine. It's Laney, but thank you. Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, listen, I look forward to working with you.
Yeah, and and I hope you realize that, you know, what we're trying to do is is uh uh, you know, bring some sort of um a feel that we all feel, we all uh have the opinion that we wanna keep our town looking like. And uh, you know, we we in no way say that your building is ugly. It's just maybe not something that we feel that might fit our general area or surroundings.
As you pull it to.
That's perfectly, um, I I I take nothing. It's 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 part of the process. Some some projects I do, the first rendering I do works great. Everybody loves it. It gets filled. Other projects I go through a hundred designs until we get it right. So it's just a process for me, and it's just, it's just what.
Yeah, we understand, and uh, you know, I mean, we appreciate your flexibility too.
Right.
Um, now, uh, you don't, you can stop sharing your screen.
Yeah, I this has nothing to do with us, right? Okay.
Um, guys, you wanna take about a five minute break, and then we'll come back and ask some uh and see if there's any more questions. We haven't. We didn't take a break at all tonight, so I assume uh We haven't, we didn't take a break at all tonight, so I assume you might be anxious. We'll take a five minute break, come back at, let's, let's make it ten minutes to ten, we'll come back, all right? And then we'll ask, we'll see if there's any more questions and then we'll figure out where we're going, all right?
Yep.
Hey, okay, yeah, so I don't know if you know, but I, I sit on the zoning board in town and.
Jerry, you're, you're not on mute.
Oh, I'm not on mute, I'm.
Alrighty. Everybody's coming back, good.
Eddie, we'll do a roll call.
Yeah, no, not quite, I don't think Gary's back yet. Jerry, you there? No, Jerry's not back yet either.
All right, we'll wait till Jerry gets back and then I'll start the recording again.
Yeah. See, that's the problem, I can't run off to their house and grab them like I can in the building, I can go get it in the hallway.
Yeah, that's the problem, that's the real problem.
You know what I mean, I mean, it's not like I could corral these people because I'm not there.
Oh, my goodness.
Somebody's making themselves an after dinner snack here, come on, guys.
Jerry's here, we just need Gary now.
Okay. I just texted him and saying, come back. Hopefully he looks at his text messages. There he is, okay. All right, we're all back. Okay. Before I, before I go to the public, are there any more questions by the board members of their architect?
Mr. Chair, if I may, we do a roll call?
Oh, yes, yes.
Mr. Romeo?
I thought Jerry was, yeah, there he is, okay.
Okay.
Put your, put your camera on, Jerry.
Done.
I can't see you.
He's, he's in a different screen, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, he's in a different screen, where is he?
Member Romeo.
There he is, okay. Well, we got you three times here. Okay.
Time's a charm, Eddie.
Yeah, I know, I, nothing's a charm with you, Jerry.
Thanks, man.
You are.
Mr. Gianakis?
Here.
Mr. Grosskopf's excuse tonight, Mr. Haynes' excuse tonight, Mr. Rosenberg's excuse tonight, Mr. Mr. Lindeman?
Here.
Ms. Brennan? Vice Chairman Johnson?
Here.
Chairman McGregg?
Here, okay, we're all back. All right, are there any more questions or from our board members of Mr. Soraco, their architect? Yes, Ben.
I just have a couple.
One sec, can we just wait for Mr. Laird to come back?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff isn't back yet, I'm sorry.
I am here, I just, I don't have my camera on.
Oh, okay, all right, fine, go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, thank you, I was just, when you were testifying about the affordable units, did you, I, I don't know if you mentioned it, but are they the same material, are they going to be made from the same materials, this, the, the units? They'll be, you know, no different than the others?
Yeah, I, I believe I mentioned that the, they'll have the same amenities, you know, the washer dryer inside their own individual heating. And the finishes will be exactly the same, kitchen counter, everything, all the bathroom finishes will be the same.
Okay, and then are there any green elements to the building?
Well, we, we do, we will be hitting Energy Star on a lot of the, on, on a lot of the appliances, things like that. We will be meeting, you know, all the energy code requirements, which are getting stricter and stricter day by day, but we have no intention at this point of no obligation, I believe, of meeting any formal lead type certifications. But it is marketing strategy to get these buildings as efficient as possible with, with energy, energy requirements, just from a marketing standpoint.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
To, to follow up on Mr. Linderman's questions, I feel like I just felt I heard something about an apartment building having to, or a larger approved complex having to include electric charging stations. I, I don't know where that was, but does anyone know what I'm talking about?
Yeah. I believe that was testified by the engineer at the last hearing.
We're going to meet the statutory requirement.
So I think to, as a reminder, I could check really quick.
Means that there's an electric charging station there, whether it's used or not?
Fif- fifteen percent, they need to install charging equipment in, it'll be fifteen percent of the parking spaces have to be make ready for EV and they can, they can install charging equipment in one third initially to get that started. So, and I believe, I don't know if Kathy's still here, but I believe she did testify to that at the last hearing. And that is, that's in conformance with a state law that was signed by the governor over the summer to include, make ready and electric vehicle charging stations more readily available at new developments.
I, I have one question too, I noticed on the first floor with the gym and the, and the meeting or room or that common room, there's no bathroom facilities on that first floor, did you, what, people that use the, the the use of that room in the gym, did you, did you inadvertently or didn't think of putting a bathroom on that? For that, so that the tenants didn't have to run back to their apartment or not have any bathroom facility?
Common space, right? The, the outside enjoyment space?
Yeah, I mean, when you have that meeting room and the gym and, you know, there's no bathroom facility down there.
Right, I, I got it, so what, what we find is with, with smaller buildings like this, we, the, the, it's really not, we don't find that it's, it's really necessary to put them in. Because the, the building is relatively small and to run in upstairs isn't, isn't terribly, isn't a big inconvenience. When we get into larger buildings, we tend to put the public bathrooms in, but that's something I can definitely discuss with Mr.
Yeah, could you look to see if you could just fit a unisex sink and a toilet? Because, you know, if somebody, if, if there's a group down there and there's guests and everything in that room, then you're imposing upon them to go to someone's apartment.
Yeah, no, I think that's a fair statement, I'm sure Mr. Rocker and I will work something out on that, I think that's a very fair comment.
And just as a follow up, the commercial development will require restaurants, are you, are you, do you intend for the commercial spaces to fit out on their own or provide just a common one for everyone on the floor?
Yeah, so, so the, the resident, depending on who comes in, they're going to have their own plumbing code requirements for X amount of fixtures, whatever it is, and then that'll be part of their fit out. And they'll be submitting independent drawings to the building department from the drawings we submit to the building department.
But the building will be built with the ability to have the plumbing there.
Yeah, typically what we do is we put sanitary lines in different parts of the retail, either underground or along columns, we call them wet columns. So, so it's not a long run to, to tie into a line. It's, it's impossible to predict where someone's going to, where one tenant's going to want a bathroom or, or a pantry sink or something like that, it's, you just can't predict it. So we just make allocation for, with pipes underground or in the columns.
So, all of the exterior entryways that could potentially access the residential area have some sort of key card or, or punch code access?
Yeah, security is, you know, clearly about most importance. So if I could just screen share again, and I lost the Zoom, hold on, just give me one second here.
Well, John, while you're doing that, Jessica, could you check your microphone, you're coming across very loud.
Right, so, so all the entry points, the back door, trash rooms, all the gym, they, they would all be, well, something like the trash room and the utility rooms, that would be for building maintenance people only, but the gym, the lounge, the front portico will have a key fob, it'd be, we'll have cameras all over the place here. That's just, that's second nature now in these type of buildings. I should, I should just point out that we, I, I don't know if I want to, Jeff, I don't know if I should bring this. I should, I should just point out, um, that we, I, I don't know if I wanna, Jeff, I don't know if I should bring this up again, but, um, we did present a previous project to, um, to the board about a year ago, um, Gillette Crossing with a different developer. And, you know, we have that rendering available, if, if I could just put it up just for a minute, um, you know, that's, that was, I don't know if the members remember this, but again, this, I think this was more closer to what you were expecting to do.
That would be A, A, that's Gillette, okay, okay, yeah, thank you, John.
So you're gonna be talking. To the board under separate, different application, yeah.
Okay.
Think that was the planning board, I don't remember that.
Yeah.
I don't think it was us.
Yeah. Any other questions, you can take this down.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just had, just gone through my notes, I just had one question I wanted to follow up on, um, Mr. Soraco, regarding the, um, the tandem garages, can you, can you comment on the dimensions of those gar- garages and, um, you know, from an accessibility standpoint, um, do you anticipate any storage being permissible or even be allowed to fit in those garages, or do you think they'll be strictly, you know, o- only able to fit the vehicles themselves, uh, could you, could you comment on that?
Sure, um, on, on PB two hundred, we have the dimensions there, they're twelve by forty, um, which is comfortable for two cars, um, I'm sure Mr. Rocker will put into his lease agreements, um, that the garages will be, um, to be used exclusively for car parking and nothing else, um, I'm sure he'll, he'll put some sort of language in there. Um, they're not intended for storage of any, you know, that's, that's not intended to.
It, it's your opinion that they should be strictly car parking only and, you know, no workbench in there, no shelving units, no overhead storage bins, anything of the like?
Yeah, the, the, the spit twelve foot is, is enough to fit a car, it's not enough to get shelving on the side or anything like that, so.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, members of the public, have any questions of their architect?
Members of the public, questions for the architect? Going once? Going twice? None?
Okay, close to the public.
Mr. Chairman, I have Mr. Poliniak, um, if I could just present him, uh.
Okay.
Thank you, and then I, I'm sure that will be the end of our evening.
Yes, yeah, because we have some procedural stuff to discuss, uh, considering, you know, where we're gonna meet next time, uh, as we're gonna be Zoom or in person, so we have to discuss that before.
Mr. Poliniak will just, uh, go through his, uh, his, his report, I think he's gonna be fairly brief, uh, to answer Mr., uh, I believe it was Mr. Haynes had some questions, uh, Doug, you were, you were the, uh, traffic expert on the prior application, you were previously sworn?
Yes, yes, I was.
And you were, you were, qualifications were accepted by the board as a traffic consultant?
That is correct.
I swear again, that was a different application.
I'm sorry?
I swear him again, it was a different application, even though.
Yeah, but swear him again.
Mr. Poliniak, the testimony you're about to give this evening, you swear it be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
And your credentials remain the same?
Yes, absolutely, uh, except I've just gotten, just gotten less hair and grayer.
Okay, that's.
Well, you got about going to prison.
Oh, yes.
So, you were, um, uh, you submitted a traffic report dated November two, two thousand twenty as part of your original testimony, is that right?
Uh, yes, I believe, I believe it was November third, twenty twenty.
Okay, and the counts were performed in two thousand nineteen, which was pre-COVID, correct?
That is right.
And based upon some concerns raised at the last hearing, did you conduct some updated counts?
We did, we went out there to, uh, refresh our data and see what, if anything has changed since the prior application.
And you also did a queuing analysis and a gap analysis as part of your recent study, correct?
Yes, to address some board members' concerns.
Would you just summarize the results of your current report with the board?
Uh, absolutely, uh, a- after the last public hearing, uh, we heard concerns of the board with respect to, um, queuing along the site frontage on Plainfield Road, and the fact that potentially some traffic conditions could have changed since the prior application, so, um, we, we hustled out there and we did some evening and morning traffic counts, uh, they were done on, uh, Monday, February seventh from four to six, and Tuesday, February eighth, uh, from seven to nine in the morning. We, we counted the debt, we counted the volumes going by the site, and we also video recorded, uh, the traffic passing the site, and from that, from those counts, we calculated the peak hour. Peak hour in the morning occurred from eight AM to nine AM, and then the evening was five to six PM, and as I expected, and a- as I think I testified through the use variance, that I, I anticipated that the two thousand nineteen volumes pre-pandemic, um, were, were probably, um, you know, something that would never reach again, just because the way our lives have changed so much with online shopping and telecommuting, um, you know, the hybrid, hybrid work scenarios. Uh, and, and that's what we found, these new counts, we found that, uh, the two thousand twenty-two counts were substantially lower than those collected in two thousand nineteen, um, approximately two hundred vehicles less in an hour, uh, in the morning, and, and even about three hundred vehicles less in the evening. So, you know, based on those volumes passing by the site, the findings of our initial report remain valid, because there's actually lower traffic out on the roadways, allowing for, um, you know, movements to and from the site, as I testified through that use variance application. With the recordings, what we did is we isolated those peak hours, and then what we did is, was called a gap analysis, and a gap analysis basically records the time, uh, in between vehicles traveling both ways along Plainfield Road to quantify, uh, uh, certain gaps that your vehicle, either accessing the site, entering or exiting, uh, would accept and, and join the, the flow of travel. Based on the highway capacity manual for an intersection such as this, with one lane in each direction, the driveway opposing, uh, it, it's, it's a standard that a gap in two-way traffic of seven point one seconds would be accepted by a left-turning exiting vehicle, and with that, you need a shorter gap to process a second vehicle, and that's calculated to be three point five seconds, so for instance, if there's a seven-second gap in traffic, a vehicle can make a left turn from our site driveway. If there's a ten-and-a-half second gap, two vehicles at one time can make a left turn from the site access, so we, we videoed that and we watched the peak hours, AM, AM, and we quantified those gaps, and based on what we determined, we found that in the morning peak hour, there's significant gaps in traffic with the ability to process approximately, or over three hundred turning movements from this property. In the evening, we calculated about two hundred or two hundred and eleven, and now when you compare those numbers to what our site is anticipating to generate, um, based on IT traffic data, we found that the maximum trip generation from the site is thirty-five peak hour vehicles, so we're talking about this site using, utilizing about seventeen percent of the available gaps in traffic passing the site. So, the, you know, sometimes you count traffic or you do a level of service analysis and you, and you get a certain result, but you know, you practically need to go out there and see what's happening, and, and from this analysis, we found that there's more than substantial breaks in traffic to allow for the traffic to, uh, to, sorry, to, uh, enter and exit this site. While we were watching the video for the gap analysis, we also monitored queues that may have occurred along the site frontage, which restrict entering and exiting movements from our site, and there's a concern that some vehicles making a left turn into the adjacent Goddard School may cause, um, the queues in the northbound direction from a southbound vehicle, uh, bypassing our site, and while this did occur, it happened very infrequently, um, during the morning peak hour, we found that it happened four times over the course of the hour, with the largest individual queue taking place for about thirty-three seconds and four vehicles, but over the course of the whole morning peak hour, we found that only about sixty, sixty-five seconds was there a time when this, uh, driveway was blocked, so with, um, you know, with the, with the, with the queues that we recorded and the gaps that were, were found, uh, the site access is not impeded any substantial amount of time that would, you know, cause any delays along Plainfield Road, the Valley Mall driveway or the site access, the evening had even less queues during that time, there was only one time during the peak hour was there a queue that actually blocked the site driveway, so. Like I said, you know, based on our findings of our initial traffic report, updated with, you know, significantly lower volumes along the site frontage, and then, you know, monitoring what actually happens out there with respect to gaps and queues, uh, it's, you know, my, my findings are the same, and, you know, I, I find that the site access will operate, uh, safely and efficiently a- at this location.
And moving to, uh, the site itself, do you have any concerns with respect to loading and unloading at this site for both residential and retail uses, even though one's not required by ordinance?
No, well, you know, we find that the smaller, uh, residential retail component is that, you know, like Kathy had said prior, you know, smaller trucks will access the site, uh, you know, we don't anticipate tractor trailer delivery, so you have your, also came from the pandemic, our, our multiple Amazon deliveries are over each vehicles, um, they could either use available parking spaces if they're available, or even, um, I think Kathy testified, uh, pull along the curb line near the access to the, um, to the residential development, so, um, and when they leave, they can go to the rear of the property and make the K-turn that was demonstrated on her plan, so I do not have a concern with that.
Changing directions, uh, Ms. Muller also testified, provided a turning template for the garbage truck, um, you agree with that analysis and did you work with her on that?
I, I did not work with her on it, but I certainly reviewed it, and yes, now there's, you know, substantial maneuverability towards the rear of the site, which is, will be a, a, a low, um, low motion, a low movement area with the, you know, limited parking spaces back there.
Samantha, the engineer had a comment in her report about a crosswalk to Valley Mall, if, if the county allows that, we, we will provide it, correct?
Yes, through the review, if, if, if they find it necessary, we, we will certainly do so.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, is our traffic guy still on, Samantha?
Yep, Jonathan's here, so just, just for the board, we have, uh, Jonathan Swinski, he's from Mot McDonald as well, um, you know, we brought him on due to the board's concerns with traffic last time, um, we only received the report, what was it, on Thursday evening or Friday morning? So, um, you know, not, not as much time to review it in detail, so he's here tonight to, you know, listen to the testimony, ask questions, and, you know, respond to any board concerns as well.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I wanted to get his, yeah.
If I could just say one thing.
Yeah.
We, we rushed, I, I pushed Mr. Poliniak so hard, get his council done, to get a report to you, so he said, Jeff, I can't do this, I can't do this, and I said, you need to do this.
We appreciate that.
No, we appreciate that we didn't get it the night before, but, you know.
Jonathan, would you make, just comment on what you, uh, at, at what you just heard in the report?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can we swear him in, please?
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Swinski, the testimony you're about to give this evening, do you swear it be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, and what are your credentials, so we know?
So I've been a transportation planner with Mot McDonald for going on fifteen years now, um, variety of different transportation impact stu- studies and developments, uh, both on the land use and, uh, traffic, uh, realm, so I, after my, my brief review of, of the updated, uh, transportation plan or traffic impact study, the only things that I, I had made note of is the, um, the land use code, um, there was a specified, uh, low, low, um, intensity land use that, that the board had requested, uh, the commercial space be, um, be identified as, um, the traffic study, uh, specified small office as their land use code when, uh, the, using the trip generation. Um, I, I apologize for not being more, um, familiar with your, your ordinances or, or land use codes, but, um, that would be the only question is, is whether or not the, uh, small office fits wi- within that low, um, intensity land use that was mentioned in the, in the report.
Well, getting past that, do you, what do you have any, uh, issues with his report or his findings?
No, none.
Uh, assuming that the office space is, is, is compliant and it's gonna be low impact, you don't see any, uh, reason to doubt his findings and his observations?
I do not.
Okay. Uh, all right, board members, do you have any questions of their, um, traffic engineer or, or, or expert?
I, I have a quick one, I don't know if it was, uh, spoken about by, uh, the traffic expert or Mr. Laird just now, but on the previous, uh, meeting I, that I watched, um, and I heard a little bit of talk about it, and I didn't want to talk about it with the engineer, because it didn't really seem like it was, it, it was the question to pose earlier today, tonight, um, with regards to this crosswalk, uh, because it's something that struck my mind, and then I saw it come up in questioning later on in the meeting, the last meeting. I know we can't, as a condition, say, put a crosswalk on a county road, so how, how is this, um, just like we couldn't say, put a sidewalk up to PNC, but apparently, you know, we, we have very cooperative applicants here, and an attorney who is thinking forward, and so how, how would it come to pass whether they, the county wants it or doesn't want it, or if they think it's necessary or safe, it's not safe? I'm not here to say which it is, I'm just wondering how it happens, if, if, if it's appropriate.
I, I'm gonna just talk to Mr. Kaplan for a moment, if you don't mind, Mr. Giannakis, um, what I was thinking was that the board could put, the applicant will make all good faith efforts to, um, to, you know, to, to, to discuss and, uh, uh, and, and obtain a crosswalk from the county, it would really be their ultimate decision if they thought it was safe and efficient, but we will, you, you can certainly put, we would agree to a condition that we will make all good faith efforts to, to make that happen, um, but no guarantees.
Yeah, so that, that would be in effect facilitating people that live in your building to cross to the, the Gillette Mall, basically.
We, we want it to happen, um, but it's really up to the county.
Or, or even that, you know, pedestrian easement that's happening, but my question kind of rolls into, uh, your, your traffic expert's, uh, testimony and how a crosswalk now, um, puts a monkey wrench into that, uh, you know, because now there's pedestrians crossing the road and, and, you know, there's still plenty of cars driving by.
Well, stay long, so you have to stop for anybody in the crosswalk, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, so I don't know, I, I, I just, you know, they're connected, that's all.
You want to address that?
Yeah, uh, I mean, sure, like I said, I mean, it's ultimately, like, Mr. Laird said, it's ultimately the, uh, the county's decision, and they'll take, you know, all the traffic debt into account and their anticipated pedestrians, uh, you know, we, the applicant did provide a sidewalk so we can get to Valley Road, so we can effectively cross a, a, the traffic signal if it's not granted by the county. You know, personally, there are residential uses located along Plainfield Road in the area, as, as well as retail uses, you know, the, the restaurants, the, the bank, uh, and certainly the Valley Mall. You know, I, I, I think, I think the Valley Road signal is, you know, possibly the best option, well, like Mr. Laird said, we'll discuss it with the county and, and get their, get their feeling on it.
Okay.
Ben, did you have a question?
Yeah, just to add to the, you know, that part of it, I was thinking about that last, last meeting as well, but the, um, yeah, I think only, the only way to be feasible is if there was something at the Valley Mall with, out of the sidewalk or something like that, it just doesn't seem like something that would be, uh, you'd be just dumping off into the parking lot and.
Yeah, there's, there's only one little sidewalk at Goddard School that goes to Goddard School, it doesn't go to Valley Mall, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, I take it back, we really don't want the crosswalk, we want people to walk up to, to the intersection and cross over. Um, so i- if the county allows it, well, you know, obviously we'll do it, but I misspoke before, we really don't, don't want it.
You don't want to put people in the middle of the road.
There is, however, there is an existing si- sidewalk that goes all the way up the Valley Mall entrance, it's a, it's an asphalt sidewalk that's adjacent to the curb line, but there, there is an existing sidewalk there, yeah, so you can feasibly get there, again, it would be, have to be reviewed by the county, and then should they, you know, entertain the idea, it of course would include all your advanced warning signs, they might even ask for something like flashing lights, um, yeah, I'm sure you're familiar with the, the LED ones that, um, you, um, are often on roadways, and you have the push push button to activate, and then they flash, um, things like that, those are, those are typical things that the county would take into consideration when they review it for, for safety for both the pedestrians and then the drivers as well.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, Mr. Laird, is your client stipulating that they will do what they can and apply to the county for a crosswalk or whatever application process there is?
Or a safe, a, a safe crossing of the street.
That's right, if, if, if it's safe and efficient. That's right, if, if, if it's safe and efficient, we'll bring it up to the county, and if it's safe and efficient. You know, and it's workable, we'll do it, it's not what we want, but, but we will bring it up.
That's acceptable, the board funds that.
Any more questions for the traffic? On traffic, okay, any members that are public want to ask a traffic question? Anybody, Deborah? No?
Members of the public, going once? Going twice?
Done, all right, now. Are you guys available to come back March first? Do you have, you reserved for them?
Unfortunately, I have another land use hearing that night, Mister Chairman, and I am sorry that I can't make it. That, Deborah, is there something that I, we can talk about that's not too far in distance, but I can't make it March first?
Well, the next one would be the fifteenth. If, if that's available.
We have, we have some in schedule already for the fifteenth.
Oh, okay.
And we really need the fifteenth for that entire meeting.
What you have left is your planner?
I have my planner and I have Mister Rocker and.
Well, you also have any additional plans for the architect?
That's correct, yes, yes.
So.
So that would be April fifth.
How's that?
That'll give us some time to work with your architecture.
Okay, yeah, you might need that time to do that.
Yeah, I want to just ask any of the, the members of my team, are you, can you not make it on April fifth? I can. Okay. We're good. Without further notice.
That's what I noticed, April fifth, we're about to decide whether that's gonna be in person or.
Yeah.
Virtual.
That's exactly why I gotta stop now, so we can discuss that.
Was it already noticed as virtual, John?
Deb?
But no, we, no, I would, I would put a notice. I mean, basically, we decide because we don't want the applicant to have the burden to renotice, so what I would do is put, I would put a notice in the paper. On behalf of the board, just stating that we're going back in person, so any meetings that have been carried, and I would list the meetings will now be in person.
Gotcha, just, just checking, because I had this come up with some other boards that they, they couldn't switch quite yet, because, you know, they want to.
We're more forethought than that.
Just to follow up, are we okay with timing on this, like, we don't need any, any extension requests or anything to get to April fifth?
Good question, Mister Johnson, any, any extension that's needed, the board, my client graciously grants.
Yes, Jeffrey, if you could just send me an email extending through the end of April, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Brian. All right, now, we're going to officially end. The, the discussion on this application, and we're going to discuss. All the new business, mask mandate lifted, meetings to return to town hall courtroom, that's an option. As Deborah will tell us, the mask mandate, we've unmasked the, the Long Ranger. And we can now go into the town hall if we so choose without masks. We can be in person. I, I personally like in person because it beats having to look at little squares. But I just want to get an input from everybody, I don't want to make anybody uncomfortable, I don't, I don't want to make anybody feel uneasy about it. You know, we, there is some benefit, oh, I love your cat.
I figured one of these days he was gonna just jump up, and of course he did.
There is some benefit to Zoom, as we know, because people can be in another state testify, but at the same time, there is a detriment, because we can't see the public, public can't. You know, really communicate with us in the same level, and we don't have the same interaction, I don't, I believe that we would have in person. But what is everyone else's feelings? Do you, being the mask mandate has ended, maybe COVID isn't as, as, as a frightening thing as it was. What is, what is everybody's opinion? Would everybody have any negative thoughts about going back in person?
Chairman? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I concur with your thought on the public especially, I think that it's important for. All of the meetings, whether it's ours or other, other, other branches of government too. Anything that can be open and can be in town hall should be, so.
Oh, I, I agree with you.
For the, for, for the public only, I believe that we should be there, so I have no. Problems with going back to full in-person meetings with or without masks, however people want to do it, I mean. I think the mask should be, options should be up to the individual, if you choose to wear one.
Obviously.
I'm not gonna be offended if someone else.
There's no mandate, but if somebody wishes to wear it, that's up to them, obviously.
Yeah.
We're not going to, to make that a fashion statement, but, you know, so. Did, anybody else have any comments? Okay, do I hear a motion that we return to live meetings as of the March first meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Does that mean Jerry's gonna not be on the phone anymore?
Right, yes. Yeah, he's not gonna be in three places.
He's gonna still wear the headset when he comes, though.
Yes, yes.
You didn't like the audio on the first option, Ed, you didn't like the audio.
Well, we don't like the audio in person either, Jerry, so what's.
All right, well, that's up to the user.
I'm teasing you.
The user.
All right, is that a second, Gary?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? I, okay, great, we're in person then, that's great. I'm sure a lot of applicants are gonna be sad, because they gotta get, they gotta drag their experts out, but. You know, that's the way it is, I, I, I think that there's pros and cons to both things, but I think in person, at least we have more of a. A visual, visceral feel for the application. They can, you know, feel a little bit more personal. So, everybody stay healthy, so I hope we, we succeed in this and it doesn't go backwards. Anything else to take care of, Deborah?
Not that I have, Mister Chairman.
So, do we have anything for March first?
That was my next question, I think we just lost our.
I know.
I'm not sure, so I will, I will try to see what, it'll be dependent on what the notice situation's gonna be, if I can get something on March first or not. If worst case scenario, Liz and Samantha and I may try to do some review over the annual report, and maybe we can get that done on March first.
That, that would, I was just saying that, if we don't have an applicant, or we have a very simple applicant. Let, let's, let's see if we can get that report done, because that's been kind of delayed now because of this whole situation, so. What?
Is it be in person on March first?
Yes, in person, working on that report to give to the planning board so that we can. Express our desires as to what we think is a problem and what issues there are. Because that's important, we have to do that, and we haven't done it, we've been so busy with applicants. Okay, great, is that all we have?
That's it, that's all I have.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All right, second. Guys, second, okay, all in favor? All right, good, we are hereby adjourned at eight thirty-one, or ten thirty-one, I'm gonna say, ten thirty-one, thank you very much, guys.
Appreciate it. Have a good night, everyone.
Bye-bye. Very much, guys.
Have a good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.